This is the April 12, 2021 meeting of the Milis Select Board. Welcome everyone. With me this evening, members of the board, Mr. Peter Germain, who is the clerk of the board, oh no, actually, he's the vice chair, and Erin Underhill, who is the clerk of the board. Also, I have with me Mike Kozinski, who is the town administrator, and Karen Bray, our operations manager. We do have a pretty packed schedule tonight, lots of things scheduled, so hopefully we can get through it with reasonable alacrity. So, the first order of business, though, would be announcements, and I would ask you, Karen, if you could again announce for everyone the particulars on Milis Beautification Day, scheduled for April 24th, just to remind the public of the upcoming event.
Certainly, give me one minute, I can quickly show the screen from last time. Here we are. Oh, four. If you can see on the screen.
Wonderful.
Doing the screen share here, so from 9:00 a.m.
Karen, you are muted.
You're muted, Karen.
Jimmy, you enjoyed that a little bit. So, Beautification Day, April 24th, which is a Saturday, and it runs from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and I don't know if you can see here, I'll try to minimize, but you can go to milisbeautificationday@gmail.com to sign up or to sign up your group, so please join us in helping to beautify Milis. I will add that we're going to be followed shortly here by our Norfolk County Sheriff, who is here to visit with us, and the Norfolk County Crew, we had a work crew here today. We started off doing some cleaning to get us ready for Beautification Day by doing some landscaping around the Veterans Memorial Building today, so we are raring to go here, and we hope everybody will join in.
And I think we had Mr. McPhee's team in.
Yes.
Cleaning the trees out front.
Yes, he was here as well on Friday, and we'll have some pictures hopefully to share on Facebook and whatnot, and that is Harrison McPhee, who kindly donated their time.
So, thanks to everyone for all the community spirit, look forward to having a successful Beautification Day on April 24th, first one in two years, but we're doing everything we can to follow all the appropriate protocols, and looking forward to having a good day for everybody.
Indeed.
So with that, I'd like to move to the first item, which is a vaccine update from Mr. McBay, who is the head of our Department of Public Health, Mr. McBay.
Hi, good evening, and thank you Chair McCaffrey. This is an update for the statewide vaccination campaign. Approximately 25% of the citizens of Massachusetts are fully vaccinated, and approximately 50% are partially vaccinated. At the local level, we have initiated vaccinations with the Milis Housing Authority, the Dano vaccine, that started in January, sorry, I should say March, now going into the second round in April. Next week, we're going to have 21st, the second round, and the 28th, the second dose. We're also starting homebound vaccinations with the Johnson, the Johnson vaccine, the fire department, this Thursday, the 15th. So, that's where we're at with local vaccinations. Milis currently, as an update for COVID in general, is currently yellow for the second week, which is good, hopefully we stay in that or go lower next upcoming weeks. We are in phase four, step one, and hopefully, we're looking forward to seeing possibly, you know, the entire state of Massachusetts vaccinated by midsummer. I know they're working on pediatric doses, they've done some studies currently, that will hopefully be rolled out sometime in early summer months, so the kids can be pediatric under 18, if you want to call that, can be vaccinated. I know that a lot of colleges are going to request that students are vaccinated prior to return in fall. So currently, that's what we have. If any questions, I can entertain those, but that's the update.
Thank you very much, and good to see that we're still moving forward. I have no questions, other members of the board, any questions? So I want to thank you again, Mr. McBay, and the whole Board of Health, and the whole Board of Health Department team for your continued hard work. It's really been remarkable what we've been able to accomplish, and thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely, no problem at all, thank you.
Okay, next item we have on our agenda, we have a visit from the Norfolk County Sheriff, Sheriff McDermott, and the sheriff, of course, visits us regularly, so this is our 2021 visit with the sheriff, so, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, right?
Just sorry.
Just wanted to remind everyone on the town meeting date. Town meeting is scheduled for May 1st, 2021, at the middle school, high school parking lot. We did make a change in the time that town meeting will begin, that'll be 2:00 p.m., 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 1st, for town meeting, and we welcome all residents of Milis to participate. So thank you, Karen, for pulling that up for me, so I would remember.
A gentle reminder.
Gentle reminder.
And just to remind everybody that all of this information can be found on the town website, if you go to the homepage, or feel free to reach out to us via email.
Okay, thank you. So Sheriff McDermott, with that interrupted introduction, please, welcome.
That's great, thanks, thanks for having me, Jim, and the chair, and members of the board, and guests, and other members of the Town of Milis administration. Ironically enough, this is my first time as sheriff in front of the board, and my apologies for the political confusion maybe, but my friend Sheriff Jerry McDermott was the prior, my immediate prior sheriff, he served as the interim sheriff since Mike Bellotti, who stepped out as sheriff in 2018, so we had an interim sheriff by the name of Jerry McDermott from Westwood, and after the, I was just elected sheriff in November, so this is my first time as sheriff, not the first time, and I've been in front of many of boards, and council on aging, and Milis as the register of probate for Norfolk County over the years, but I'm certainly honored to be here tonight for the first time as the sheriff, to kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing in the sheriff's office this year. I'm really thrilled, I knew that we were coming up with our work crew that was going to start helping out in Milis, so I'm glad to hear that that program has rolled out already. And just to let you know on that, before I start my formal presentation, we have anywhere from 10 to 15 men who are in the process, they're getting ready to finish their service or their time at the Norfolk County House of Correction, and one of the things that our pre-release folks look forward to is being able to go out in the community and do some work projects. This is of extreme value to them, so I appreciate the Town of Milis for giving them the opportunity. It helps with our reentry program, with people feeling a sense of accomplishment and recognition when they've made it through a tumultuous and problematic period of their life, that they get to come out to a town like Milis and really find themselves, the productive use of their time, and hopefully develop skills as they go through. So I thank you on behalf of them, but thank you for giving me the chance to speak a little bit about how our office at the sheriff, at the Correctional Center, can work hand-in-hand with communities like yours to meet your particular needs. Give you a quick background about where I come from, who I am, I am a resident of the city of Quincy. After graduating from Boston College, I served in the Massachusetts Legislature as an aide in both the House and the Senate, and subsequently ran for and served on the Quincy City Council, and I can't believe I say that, I served back in the 90s, so I'm kind of dating myself a little bit, served three terms on the Quincy City Council. I attended Suffolk Law School while I was on the council, became an attorney, and for the past 18 years, before becoming sheriff, as I mentioned before, I served as your register of probate for Norfolk County, serving as the clerk magistrate of the Probate and Family Court in Canton. So I've been very much involved with the communities throughout Norfolk County over the course of my career, and I welcome this new opportunity to serve as sheriff, to bring a new perspective to public safety, to the sheriff's office and to the Town of Milis. My mission as sheriff is to make sure that the office serves as a public safety resource for the Town of Milis and all of our 28 communities that make up Norfolk County. As we know from the past year, it's really time, it gives us an opportunity to reflect and reconsider what we mean by the term "public safety." I want to push past the limited understanding of simply putting criminals in jail and expanding this to include taking a more proactive approach to improving the conditions that make residents feel safer, as well as to make improvements to the conditions that make individuals commit crime in the first place. One of the ways that we are going to be doing this in the sheriff's office is by expanding our programming and our community outreach. We're opening up more opportunities for residents to make use, particularly our young folks, to use our ropes course, which is in the Town of Braintree, and our various other youth programming that we have ongoing. We are expanding our youth programming, it's well-known the Town of Braintree hosts our youth leadership camp, we are finally going to be putting a camp, a pilot program this year, because as I campaigned last year, I realized that, you know, it seems like the sheriff's office is a little, as I say, eastern Norfolk County heavy, and really does not necessarily service more the central and southern and northern parts of Norfolk County, and we need to create more programs that attract youth and other members of the communities that those communities are from into the services that we have. We are looking at at-risk populations, which does include many of the juveniles in our communities. We're looking to actively increase participation in our senior program, including our lifesaving "Are You OK?" program. I'm blessed to have inherited that from my predecessors, and we've seen the benefits of having three lives saved just since January, most recent, a 99-year-old woman who fell down the night before. Our program actually calls seniors every day to check in with them, asking, "Are you OK?" When we don't receive a positive feedback from that automated phone call, we start to go into emergency mode, and that 99-year-old woman who had fallen the night before, didn't respond to our call that next morning, we initiated emergency response, paramedics, first responders arrived on the scene, they did find her, brought her to South Shore Hospital, and she's doing well from last we reported, so we're grateful to have this program still active. We also have for our seniors, our File for Life, our Yellow Dot program, and we're going to expand a program with our youth and our seniors this year. We're exploring options to expand participation across the board in all our senior programs, and I'll be working with the Council on Aging to make sure that we get the word out to the Town of Milis. We're also continuing to make sure that our security resources from the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office are available to communities like Milis, especially our smaller communities, and I'm certainly sensitive to a town like Milis that is a small community, you know, you're tough on, like all of us, we're tough on our budgets, but smaller communities can be more challenged, especially when it comes to public safety issues. So we have our mobile command center that comes out for incident command, we have our school resource officers that help with our local schools, our K-9 units, which help out with drug searches, as well as search and rescue issues, and sometimes our demonstrations, which are great for community activities, and we also have our vital strategic partnerships, which includes the Town of Milis under the term Metro Act. Our programming isn't necessarily just about stopping crime, but it's about making sure that every resident of Norfolk County feels safe, and that includes feeling safe not only from crime, but also feeling safe from other challenges, such as COVID-19, the recent health epidemic, climate change issues, social isolation, opioid addiction, systemic racism, and more. These threats don't simply stop at the town borders, so we need to work together to tackle these issues head-on. At the same time, I recognize that each community experiences these problems in unique ways. Because of this, there is no one-size-fits-all approach that will work for every town. My office is uniquely situated to help coordinate responses to public safety challenges across the county, but this coordination will only be successful if it's guided by the experiences and the needs of each community. So as sheriff, I want to work closely with Milis to make sure that we're meeting your town's specific needs. We have the opportunity to make lasting positive change in Norfolk County, and partnering with towns like Milis is the first step in making that happen. Through partnerships with the Milton Select Board, local public safety and human resource, human service agencies, such as our veterans, organizations, school districts, and councils on aging, we'll work together to tailor our public safety efforts to what works best for the Town of Milis. So I want to thank for taking the time to introduce or reintroduce myself to you tonight as your sheriff. I look forward to working alongside you to make sure that the Town of Milis and Norfolk County is safer for everyone, and I'm happy to answer any questions or get any comments or feedbacks that you might have.
Well, now Jimmy, you're muted.
Once I'm muted, we can even thank you more than ever. Thank you very much for the presentation, we look forward to working with you as well. Maybe you just talk a little bit about one or two of the aspects you were talking about, really, there's a K-9 and school resource officers, these are areas that our police department works with us directly on, and how do you see possible coordination with them and maybe helping them as well as to improve the service that they're providing?
So, yeah, part of the overall program that we have, we actually, town by town, we have a working partnership called Triad, and that Triad partnership is a partnership with the sheriff's office, the councils on aging, as well as the local law enforcement agency. So knowing that the Town of Milis is as active as it is in that program, you know, we serve as a resource, you know, so if the town, you know, depends on any given moment, we're supposed to be meeting regularly, and unfortunately, COVID kind of obviously canceled all those plans, so when we have that ability to come back together, I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about what the needs of the Town of Milis might be in regards to that. You know, so we, you know, the Triad program is focused on seniors, and we look towards certainly advocating, you know, educating seniors about scams that are ongoing in the community, you know, telephone scams, email scams that come up. We want to obviously get people to participate in this "Are You OK?" program, which is a national program, very successful in Norfolk County, has saved hundreds of lives over the course of 20 years, so we want to increase participation. The other senior program, which is great, is called the File for Life program, and that's something that we work directly with the councils on aging, and that's twofold, there's a file for life that you can affix to your refrigerator, or it also can be in your glove compartment of your car, and either way, it allows first responders to immediately know when there's a medical emergency, either in your vehicle or at your home, that there's a File for Life card that uses your medication, your emergency contacts, seconds save lives when it comes to emergency response. And so those programs are something that we want to work with the seniors for. Certainly, what the town has when it comes to our schools, we do have two school resource officers that actually come out with us, sometimes with our K-9s, to do a demonstration. We have a program relative to anti-bullying, we have programs regarding, you know, kind of the quasi-dare program regarding drugs, so we really tailor our programs based upon the needs of the community, and the sheriff's office, hopefully at some point too, we will have in-person tours again, the kids love coming out, they do, it's an educational opportunity to come and take a tour of the facility and realize that, you know, they usually meet sometimes, have a speech by an inmate that talks about, you know, turning his life around, and so there's a lot of educational opportunities we have with the kids, too. And certainly, as we know, as you're benefiting, you are a beneficial moment for having our work crews, like I said, our crews, you help us by giving men an opportunity to come out to your community to help on various work projects, whether it's as simple as cleaning up, or some more technical stuff like painting, or carpentry work, or landscaping, so these are skills that we're teaching the men, so that they have an opportunity when they come back to the Town of Milis, you know, that they're skilled there, but they have a job that they can go to, they're educated, and that they can properly go back into the community and be productive.
Very good, thank you. Other members of the board have any questions I'd like to pose?
Okay, there are a few people I've seen working here I was very impressed with, and I think the program is an excellent program, so I am very happy that we're supporting it as we are. Thank you.
Okay, Erin, yes?
I also don't have any specific comments, but thank you, and it was great to hear the presentation, and I really do like that "Are You OK?" program, that sounds like a great idea.
And thank you, and Chris Collaren is on the line, Chris, if you could give a quick wave, Chris is part of our external affairs office, and Chris will be, is one of several staff members that are going to be doing a little bit, they're going to be reaching, this isn't a one-and-done, you won't see me for six more months, okay? Chris and other the team members are reaching out to the directors of the Council on Aging, I've had chats with the chief of police, I'm going to be meeting with all the fire chiefs, so we're going to be rolling out a lot of programs, and certainly through the local newspaper, through local social media, we'll be rolling out these programs to hopefully have all your residents be able to at least be educated, participate where they want to participate in.
Very good, great, thank you so much, we appreciate your coming and look forward to continuing to cooperate with your office and you, very much appreciate the outreach, and I want to make sure folks in Milis understand that it was the sheriff who did the outreach, so he's already demonstrating his intent to be proactive with communities like ours, so thanks again.
Have a great night, thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to watch the rest, the next four hours if you'd like.
I looked at that agenda, and I served like my six years on the city council, I remember those days, and sometimes painfully, but good luck with that.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Take care.
Karen?
Yes.
I'm not sure if there's some technical thing going on, but my screen is frozen, and the time down the bottom is not showing what time it is.
Hmm.
I don't know if others are experiencing the same thing, if it's just this machine that I've been so grateful, gratefully, I've gratefully received from the IT director, but it's harder to follow if I can't see what time it is.
Uh, well, hold on one minute.
Certain people do have different challenges in this area, don't they?
Can I ask my colleagues if they can see the shared screen and the time on it?
I'm trying to see if there's something.
I can, I can see Karen's screen, and it is 6:54.
There you go.
Yeah, well, it's, okay, now it's moved, all right.
Let me try stopping the screen sharing for a minute, Jim, maybe that'll help you.
Yeah, it does, it comes back, I think.
Can you see it, is that because I was screen sharing perhaps?
Yeah. You see it now, Jim?
Yeah, I can see it now, but it's dark. Is that me?
It might be.
Thanks for speaking so generous, Jim. Okay.
Well, I can tell you that Ms. Scannell is here and ready to speak, I believe.
I can see that, yes, that I can see.
Okay.
Oh, next item on our agenda is a report from the treasurer, asking us to consider approval of a DPW bond sale, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Chair McCaffrey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Jennifer Scannell, Treasurer Collector. The Town of Milis received competitive bids from bond underwriters on Wednesday, April 7th. It was for a $4 million, 25-year general obligation bond issue. Bond proceeds will be used to permanently finance the construction, renovation, and remodeling of the Department of Public Works building located at Seven Water Street. The town received two bids on the bond sale, the winning bidder was Robert W. Baird. They offered a premium of approximately $286,000 and an interest rate of 1.91%. The premium is used to pay issuance cost, and the remaining amount will reduce the amount of the borrowing authorization. One last note on the sale is that the town's credit rating remains unchanged at AA3, which is a strong rating with low credit risk. I'd be happy to take any questions, otherwise, I'm just asking the board to approve the bond sale, and I did provide a suggested motion in my memo that was sent to the board.
Right, yeah, so just to recap, there was competitive bid, we did receive two bids, the effective interest rate is under 2%, so that's a plus, because over the life of the bond, it certainly is less expensive for the community, and, you know, we still see that interest rates are pretty low for borrowing purposes. Again, none of us on this call have the ability to predict when that's going to change, but at least for this purpose, this is going to be a pretty competitive rate. Can you tell us, what's the actual date of the purchase?
You know what, I'm looking at that, that's incorrect, I'm sorry, it's April 7th, so that suggestion, motion should read for a $4 million bond issue that's sold on April 7th, not April 30th.
Okay, yep, okay, so already did it. Oh, we already got it?
It sold last Wednesday, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it actually closes the end of this month, on April 30th.
But there's a commitment by the issuer, buyer, whomever?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will, just like you touched upon rates a little bit, I did have a discussion with a financial advisor, and, you know, while nobody has a crystal ball, you know, the town was lucky enough to lock in this unbelievably low rate, but they expect as more people get vaccinated and the economy tends to pick up a little bit, that rates will continue to increase over the next year. So the timing for this bond issue was spot on.
Was fortunate.
Pretty good, yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board members? All right, then I would take a motion from the board with respect to the, this bond issue, and again, the wording has been provided, so hopefully that will, just so the public is aware of the fact, the actual motion has a lot of terminology in it that is fairly obscure, but has been reviewed by the treasurer, has been reviewed by town council, and I'm sorry, by bond council, so it is accurate but complicated, so I would take a motion.
I was going to move it, but I don't have it in front of me, Karen has shifted the page.
Oh, sorry about that.
I don't have it in front of me, so, there we go. I move that the board adopt the votes prepared by bond council to approve the town's general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds dated April 7th, I believe you said.
Actually, you know what, it should be April 30th, I apologize, that's when the bond sold, on April 7th, but closes on April 30th.
That's.
So that is correct.
Okay, April 30th, 2021. And I will add that this is for a $4 million construction bond, and I believe you said the interest rate was about 1.91 or something percent, so.
Correct. Second.
So it's been moved and seconded for the board to adopt the votes prepared by bond council to approve the town's general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds dated April 30th, 2021, and again, that's the bond, bonding for the purpose of constructing the DPW facility. Any further discussion? I'll then pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Germain, yes, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, thank you very much.
Just one note, I did leave all the documents with Karen, and if you could sign them by the end of the week, that would be great.
Okay, so sign them by Wednesday, right?
That would be great.
Just put the fire under.
I don't want to put too much pressure, Wednesday would be great, but I'll take Friday if it has to be.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Actually, we have several things to sign, so I'll be poking everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Okay, again, I'm having trouble seeing this, but I think it says 7 o'clock under your.
It does.
Okay. So, we have scheduled for 7 o'clock a hearing to consider an application for stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit, and also actually asking the board to consider some waivers of the stormwater rules. This is with respect to the property at, if I can find it, 326 Fortress Street. I see Mr. American, Ms. Riccosar, the person who keeps us honest, on, so, that being said, since we have, oops, since we're on time pretty much, I would then ask Mr. American and/or the applicant, if someone else is here as well. I would then ask Mr. American and/or the applicant, if someone else is here as well, to outline through the Board the situation and also the requests that you're making with respect to the applicability of several of the stormwater management requirements related to this permit request.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Dan American with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to share my screen for you. Everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. I'm here tonight with the applicant, Justin Johnson. Justin is going to be moving to Millis. And he's going to be building this house for himself and his family. And the reason, normally we come to you after we've kind of hammered out all of the technical issues, but in this case, we have some unusual circumstances that we wanted to discuss with the Board before we kind of wrap up the technical end of things. Just tell you about this property here. This is 326 Orchard Street. You're going down Orchard Street towards Southend Farm.
Excuse me one minute, Dan.
It's on the left.
Sorry, Dan. Jim, did you officially open the hearing? Lost, Jim. I think we have to officially open it.
Having lost, Jim, can one of us...
You certainly can.
I'll step in then and open the hearing for the 326 Orchard Street discussion with Dan American and Legacy Engineering.
Erin, you have to second.
Second on that?
Sorry, yes, second.
Thanks, guys. Sorry, Dan.
No problem. Should I wait until the Chairman returns?
I think he's here somewhere. I don't know. I can't see.
Dan, given that he has some technical difficulties tonight, why don't you proceed? I will try to call him.
Oh, there he is. He just came back.
Back.
We like to keep it colorful at these meetings a little bit.
There he is, I see. I'm happy to return. In a wonderful tree.
Jim, I just... They opened the hearing. Pete and Erin opened the hearing, so we should be good to go.
Thank you. You don't need me. Okay, good. Okay, so I'll just start at the beginning here real quick. So this site is at 326 Orchard Street. You're heading towards Sherwin. It's on the left, right after you go over Bogus Oak Brook, just before you get to Southend Farm. It's 14.6 acres of land. It's a big piece of property. It's mostly upland. You have, around the fringes, you have wetland areas associated with Bogus Oak Brook. There's a wetland system that comes down through here, through the adjoining lots, and goes down into this area. This property is conservation restricted. It's an old conservation restriction. They don't do them this way anymore, but the way this conservation restriction was created, was created by Peter Temple, was to allow the construction of one single-family home on the entire 14.6 acres of land. So Justin is purchasing the land, has purchased the land, to do that. And the conservation restriction is very clear about how it's done. They're allowed to set aside a 60,000-square-foot pad area for their house proper, septic system yard, that kind of thing. That basically ties back to your zoning requirements for this district that we're in. And the rest of it is basically left alone, except for the driveway coming in. Now, we have a very long driveway. There's only two ways in. One is through here, but there's a wetland here. The other is through the longer frontage here. There's no wetland crossing here involved, but there is some floodplain activity. And we did go out for the prior owner and secured permits for this driveway to cross through this floodplain. We got permits from the Conservation Commission and from the Zoning Board. So that's done. And now we come to the part where we're developing the lot and we're disturbing more than an acre. So that triggers your regulations. The thing that's kind of odd about this is that, you know, the regulations that are... They're basically modeled after DDP Stormwater Management Standards, which are intended for larger projects, residential projects of more than four units. If you read the sections where those regulations apply, and the reason for that is they're very involved and they're very expensive to study, to do all the calculations, to write all the reports. And it's generally not really deemed appropriate to subject something like a single house to that type of a financial undertaking. So we are going to be asking, I have actually in the letter I submitted, for some waivers from some of your technical requirements. And I wanted to discuss that with you tonight because that will dictate how we move forward in this. If this is something that the Board is willing to entertain, then I'll work with Melissa and iron out what she thinks is a reasonable approach to stormwater management, even though it may not technically comply with the stormwater standards. And if something the Board is not willing to undertake, then we're going to have to go off and do all that work and provide calculations and design stormwater basins and all kinds of stuff. So let me first talk about what we have. The stormwater management standards are basically broken into two parts. One is the erosion control and sediment control component of that. We're not asking for any waivers in that regard. We have erosion controls established. We have a stormwater pollution prevention plan prepared and submitted. We're not doing anything at the construction stage that isn't consistent with your regulations. The second part of the stormwater standards is the drainage calculation. And then these are detailed calculations that model the site pre-development and post-development. And you're supposed to design stormwater management systems that maintain rates of runoff and provide recharge. And that's the area that we're asking for some waivers from. What we have, which is something that's not really taken into account in these regulations, is we have a huge site here that's going to remain largely undisturbed. You know, so if from this building area, stormwater runoff will run off in, you know, in any of these directions, and it's going to pass through our property that is undisturbed woodland, and that's going to provide a lot of treatments and infiltration. But, you know, unfortunately, there's no formal way to take credit for that under the regulations. We are also providing a stormwater recharge system for the roof of the house, which is designed to hold two inches of runoff from the house itself. The driveway, although it shows on the plan it's presently to be paved, it's actually going to be gravel. It's a thousand-foot-long driveway. It's too expensive to pave it. So I think that actually helps having it gravel because it's a more pervious surface, obviously. And we are going to, down through this area here, we're going to construct a driveway swale, a grass swale along the side of the driveway. We're going to cross this the driveway into the swale. Melissa suggested we put some check dams in there, which we will do. And that'll capture the runoff from the driveway, provide some treatment, provide some infiltration. And that all runs down to this lower area where we cross through the floodplain. And in this area, we have... We, because we're doing some filling in the floodplain, we had to do a compensatory flood storage area, which means we have to excavate out some areas to offset the fact that we're filling in for the driveway. And this, again, is something that Conservation and Zoning Board already looked at. But the effect of that is that we're basically creating what is almost a stormwater basin. It's this very shallow, flat, vegetated area. And all of our driver runoff is going to run down into that area. And then it's going to work its way through here where you'll get infiltration and treatment before it ends up discharging further downstream. So we have a number of systems and features at this site that are quite unique, that really will provide a very significant amount of stormwater management, but they don't fit neatly within the requirements of your regulations for DDP Stormwater Management Standards. So what we're hoping is that the Board would be willing to entertain the granting of those waivers that relate to basically the having to generate all these detailed elaborate calculations and design little stormwater management systems that fit very precisely within the confines of the DDP Stormwater Management Policy and Handbook. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let me just ask a couple of preliminary questions, and then I certainly will have my colleagues join in the conversation. Just clarify for me. I believe you stated at the outset that under the state DDP requirements, many of these, because this is a single-family dwelling, a number of the state requirements which parallel our stormwater regulations do not apply. Is that correct?
None of them apply. That's correct. The DDP Stormwater Standards only apply to five to seven units under certain circumstances and over seven under all circumstances. So a one project, a one-unit project, or two or three, those standards don't apply to state.
So, but the regulations that we have in place, apparently we don't have that exemption. Is that correct? Is that your view?
It's not spelled out. You know, your regulations say, you know, basically you need to follow the standards. And we're disturbing more than an acre. But I suppose there could be an interpretation that the standards say they don't apply, or they don't apply. But I don't think that's, I don't think that's the prevailing view.
Okay.
Eric, can I?
I'm sorry?
This is Melissa from BETA.
Yes, we were going to come and ask you. That was the next...
Let me know.
Right, please, come to the front of the line.
Okay, if I can just give a little background on the stormwater regulations in regards to the MS-4 permit, because I think that as far as stormwater standards go, it's true that the MS-4 standards usually has an exemption for a single-family home. However, the MS-4 permit, which the town, you know, has an MS-4 permit, and that's where these stormwater regulations came from, they come through the MS-4 permit. So that's dictated by EPA, the federal government.
Right.
And so through that MS-4 permit, they require you to have these stormwater regulations. And part of that is they say that any project that disturbs more than an acre, they tell you that is your minimum threshold, needs to abide by the MS-4 standards. You know, most towns that we review in, or a lot of, I should say, I guess, a lot of towns that we review in do uphold the stormwater management standards for single-family homes, large properties like this, because that's the intention of the overall MS-4 permit. When you start building in town and you have a lot of these, they add up. They all contribute to stormwater, both quality and quantity. And so that is the essence of what the MS-4 permit is trying to do. It's trying to get this lower hanging, or this, these contributors. And if it's not, if the homeowners and the developers aren't contributing and kind of pulling their weight as far as treating stormwater and implementing the MPs to the standard, then it falls on the town to take care of needing the MS-4 permit. And the town of Millis does have phosphorus reduction requirement through the permit. So that's how these things all tie together. And that's, I guess, what I would caution when you're looking at granting a waiver for a property. And it's something that I don't think the Board has necessarily contemplated to make a precedent for anything that comes in front of you as a single-family home going forward and how you want to deal with that and kind of the verbal effects that it has in town. The other thing is I know that there is in town, you have a stormwater utility, and there's a whole credit system. And I'm sure this property would be subject, like the other ones are, to the impervious area requirement and contributing to that. And we'll probably be looking for credit, I would assume. And the design calculations to apply for that credit would be something that, you know, would be coupled with this review and they would benefit from, I think, showing the calculations. Would it be a piece that they would implement in the site?
Yeah, I mean, when I looked at the material, it did strike me that the issue of demonstrating that the construction basically does not reduce overall the flow. And when there is impermeable surface created on the property, then it's up to the homeowner to design, or the developer, to design a system to mitigate that. So I was having a little trouble understanding how that might work if we didn't apply the standards. But that's premature for me to jump to that. But let me just go back and say, what you're saying to us is that we need to consider this in the context of the MS-4 permit, which is really the permit that we're governed by in terms of the actual stormwater requirements on the community. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. That's where your regulation stems from. And that's why you have them.
So granting that would, granting an exemption would obviously not be a one-off kind of thing, as you say, but it then leaves us with a situation where another petitioner comes in, we'd have to consider that as well. I'd ask members of the Board if they have questions for the applicant or for our engineer.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I think what this does in my mind is bring up the issue of the standards that we've set and the review of those standards that we are in the process of doing because of the way in which the stormwater rules were written. And I realize we haven't as yet finalized anything. In fact, we're still in the midst of working on those rules. But this brings to the fore the need to relook at the rules and make some decisions as to how we, as a community, think those rules ought to be applied in the future, whether it's to new homes, existing homes, not just residential, but even businesses. But we have a number of questions, and as I recall, there were 16 or 18 homeowners who petitioned, who raised a series of questions, all of which were valid. But because of the way the rules were written, and this now comes into some of that, we decided to make, take a stand with the understanding that we would be reviewing those rules. We haven't done that. This raises that specter clearly as something that we need to take a look at. Listening to what they're asking, in all honesty, doesn't seem unreasonable. But what I have no understanding of is what the implications of any ruling would be, given the rules that exist or what we think ought to exist. So I am of the opinion at this stage that we are probably not in a position to grant a waiver. Not that I don't think that a waiver isn't appropriate, but because it may set a precedent, as Ms. Roco said, without us fully understanding the implications, given the rules we've got and some of the rules that we think ought to be modified. So my position is that at this stage, I'd be uncomfortable granting a waiver and not because I don't think it isn't important to do.
Ms. Underhill?
Sorry. Pete raises some excellent points and I too, I guess, I too would be a little bit hesitant, especially after, you know, the procedure we went through with hearing appeals and credit hearings and, you know, setting precedent and such. I think what, I think what Pete says makes a lot of sense. So I, I guess I too would be hesitant if it was a little bit more black and white, where there isn't the issue of the MS-4 type of requirements and permit. I would probably... probably be a little bit more willing to go that way.
Okay, other comments from the board? Mr. Amerikin?
Well, I guess I just want you to appreciate the magnitude of what's involved here. The, the design alone, along with the period of you pass, go through the normal routine for something that would be typically applied for much larger projects is going to be at least $10,000. That's just design. And then to comply with the technical standards of these provisions that, again, were intended for much larger projects is going to be, I'm going to have to design more stormwater BMPs that are on top of the $10,000. So I just, I appreciate what's being said. I, I just think that this particular site has a lot of unique features that would not be applicable to many single-family home sites, and does provide a lot of treatment and infiltration. And I guess I'm just pleading on behalf of your future resident to not have to incur this massive expense for him, his family.
Melissa, could you just go back again and again? Because the thing that is a concern to me is that you're explaining to us the MS4 requirement. I, I think that the credit rules are slightly different, and perhaps we have more leeway in fashioning them. I'm very concerned about taking action which the DDP, not the DDP, EPA could come back and say, well, you're not complying with your MS4 permit, because the implication there is very, is draconian.
So the MS, so the MS4 permit just says that you need to have regulations in place for an acre or more of disturbance. Specifically says that it does not say what type of disturbance that is. It does not, it does not restrict that to businesses. It doesn't restrict that to, you know, a certain number of homes or anything like that. It's just a, it's just a black and white, one acre or more of disturbance. Even if you were not building a home on the property, if you were just putting up solar panels, you were clearing for, you know, to farm it or something like that, that's an acre of disturbance. So that's what the permit says. And then it also very specifically says that your regulations need to say that for an acre or more disturbance, you need to meet MS4 standards, and you need to have a certain percentage of phosphorus and total suspended solid removal. So this is something the town needs to have in place. MS, I do know that DDP, MS DDP is working right now to update their stormwater regulations so that they ideally mirror the MS4 permit or exceed it. So they're trying, they, there's a realization that there's this disjointed, you know, process going on right now because they're requiring different things, it's entities. So MS DDP is working right now to update those stormwater standards. When they get them done or, you know, put them into effect, we don't know, it might be next year, might be a year and a half. I don't think it'll be in the next six months, but you can kind of see that coming on the horizon. So hopefully those two things will jive in the near future. If they, if waivers are granted for things from your regulations, I don't think that EPA would necessarily be able to tell you that you weren't complying because you have the regulation there and you're, you know, you're trying to comply with it. But you do have a phosphorus reduction requirement. You need to put together a phosphorus control plan. I'm sure you'll be hearing more of that in the next year or two, because that's due, for the beginning stages of it are due in the next, next year. And you have to show that Meliss is reducing your phosphorus contribution to the Charles River watershed by a certain pounds, and there's a whole bunch of calculations that, that go into that. And one of the things that you can show that you're reducing is by BMPs that we're putting in, in town, things that you're doing, you can take credit for, you know, the private sector as well, and what homeowners are doing, tracking these things to show that you're reducing your phosphorus levels for Charles River watershed. So by, you know, kind of giving waivers in some of these areas or letting some people, being able to quantify these things, even if, I think it would be especially helpful to quantify the volume and the treatment for all the BMPs that are being proposed on site. So at least you know where the site stands and what it is providing versus just, you know, there's some mitigation going on, and we don't really have a, a number of calculations to back that up.
Well, let me ask then, I mean, are you suggesting that there is potentially some middle ground here from waiver, between waiver and strict compliance? I mean, I would just note that you have provided us, as you always do, with a number of comments on the proposals that have already been made, and it is not a simple, straightforward task, no matter how you look at it. But is there, is there a manner in which, you know, we could have a more, I don't know what the right term is, more liberal view of how you comply with these things rather than some kind of more elaborate methodology which we've used in other properties? I mean, I, I think we're trying to be fair here, but I do, you know, this is a unique property, it'll be the only one that'll come up in Meliss until the next unique property comes up, and then the next unique one after that. So I think that just the uniqueness of it is probably insufficient, in my view, but...
Yeah, I think just because the first, first makes it unique, but like, as you said, it might not be so unique going forward. We do these period reviews in Westwood and see them all the time, personally, both family homes, and they do uphold the stormwater standards, you know. I would hesitate in granting a waiver. I don't know that, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's worth investing in the, in the, in the stormwater standards and the review that behind it.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Jermaine?
I, I get concerned when I hear the adherence to the standards. I recognize what your intent is, but I also recognize that there's, what I would say, and in this case perhaps, an unreasonable cost to the landowner who intends to build. And it's for that reason I'm interested in, let's see if we can put together some guidelines so that this doesn't turn out to be a unique situation. The town takes a stand on, here's what we think are reasonable guidelines for situations like this or similar to this, but at least there's a standard there that we will be setting, and we will work with people like Melissa and our town council and so on to better understand the options available to us and the risks that we may be taking. But life is full of risks, and I think it's important that we, as a community, not necessarily penalize someone who, in all good faith, has bought a piece of land that they think is reasonable for development and hasn't had, doesn't have to go through an onerous and expensive process just to build on that piece of land when it looks reasonable. I'm not saying it is reasonable. I'm not passing judgment on this land, but what I'm saying is we need to establish, I think, standards that would apply in this case and allow people like Mr. Amerikin and the owners to say, yeah, if we do this at a reasonable cost, it will meet the conditions we need to meet.
Any further comments? And tonight, the request, hearing request is for a waiver of the rules, not a recreation of anything new. So if we decide that we want to review them going down the road, it doesn't necessarily help this petitioner much. So any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Neville.
Yes, Mr. Neville.
Yes, I would just like, if Dan could explain the driveway a little better. I know this, about my parents' house at 344 Orchard Street, and about three-quarters of the way back of their property, there's a stream that floods pretty much every spring, and that'll be cutting right across the front of their driveway. And also, it could address the structure of the property. That front driveway is right at the crest of the hills. Therefore, from my point of view, again, I haven't, this is the first time I've looked at this, the slope of the property all slopes into the Bogastow Brook. So how is the runoff going to be contained to the property? And also, where's the septic system going to be placed for this property such that it is contained on the property, on the improved one-acre lawn?
Sure. Sure. This is the Neville property here. What Jim is describing is that there's an intermittent stream that flows through here, and it has a wetland around it, and that's the wetland you're seeing. That stream comes across our property here, flows down through the Landry property, and then terminates in a wetland here, and then that is then piped into the Orchard Street Drainage System, which is in turn piped into Bogastow Brook on the far side of Orchard Street. So that stream and wetland system do not continue through this area. This area is more elevated than that. This is a low spot here. Okay. So we're not, we're not going to interfere with that wetland or the intermittent stream at all. The septic system is located here. We've done source testing for that. This, I think you can see, is the crest of the hill where everything from this line, and I'm tracing here, over sheds towards Bogastow Brook directly. Everything from this line to the right sheds into the wetlands that we're talking about, that intermittent stream, and then runs down through this area out into Orchard Street.
All right, thank you. I just didn't understand the slope of the property relative to that stream and...
Understood, yeah.
Yes, Kathy McGinnis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy McGinnis, 78 Iron Road. I'd like to remind the board that there are several properties that are downstream of the Bogastow Brook, and we would appreciate that the hardship that one of the members talks about would create a more of a hardship if there are chemicals that are not cleaned up, if the applicant were to do what he was told. And if I might add also, Mr. Chairman, in essence, this is a subdivision size of land, even though in his great wisdom, Mr. Temple put a conservation easement on it, and there are other properties in town that do have the same conservation easements. And I'd like to also mention that a financial hardship is not a reason for granting of waivers. There are other properties in town that would not require the amount of money to support this property. And about a 1,000-foot driveway, Mr. Chairman, I have over a 600-foot driveway, and it took us eight years to pave 50 feet at a time, 75 feet, whatever we had. So there's no need to pave anything all at once. It can be done. And I like the, what Melissa, and just to let you know that years ago, the planning board begged and begged Melissa to leave Beta and join Meliss, but she just had a baby and had done that, so maybe she'll reconsider, because you learn a lot every time you talk to Meliss. But the MS4 expects people to contribute and pull their weight regarding their property, and I hope the Board of Select would, the select board would see fit that this applicant does the same. And thank you for the time, letting me speak.
Thank you. Any other comments? We are in the hearing, so I think we've had the comments.
Yes.
We closed the hearing. Okay, Mr. Stedman, do you want to speak?
I would, very briefly, especially after what we've learned here this winter at the Regency of Glen Ellen. I, I ask if Dan and the owners will consider how they're going to remove snow and store it from a 1,000-foot driveway. And second, just to point out, that the permit that we, at the Conservation Commission, have given is for the driveway. There's nothing for the house. I'm not sure if it'll come within our jurisdiction, because I can't see from here if any of the, the property is within 200 feet of the river. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to comment.
Thank you. Mr. Amerikin?
Yeah, the, no, the answer is no. The driveway and the house are outside of offer zones and riverfront areas, all in upland areas. Snow is just, the snow along the driveway is just wind drove to one side. So that's all you do, you run a plow down it, windrow the snow off to the side, just like any other driveway. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, a couple of things, I'm going to need to continue this hearing, obviously, really can continue to work through the technical stuff. I think I'm, I have a good sense of things here that, that the board is likely to want the calculations to be done. If that was the case, then I would ask, you know, obviously you don't have any information on this topic, but that perhaps the board might be willing to entertain smaller, more technical waiver discussion items down the road as we work something out. You know, for example, phosphorus treatment, treatment of runoff is really just the first inch of runoff, you know? But all treatment revolves around that first inch of runoff. It doesn't have anything to do with the larger storms. So maybe, you know, we could focus on that as being really the, the main push behind your MS4 permit, which is the, the control of the discharge of substances to wetlands and waterways. But either way, we'll need to continue this. If the board does want the calculations done, I'm going to need, we're going to need a month, because I have to prepare those calculations, and then I have to get them to Melissa to review, and then she has to review and respond. So we would, under that circumstance, we would ask for continuance for a month, if the board was willing to entertain the waivers that we were asking for. I think we'd probably only need two weeks, because then we can just, you know, hammer out some improvements to what we already have on the plan and come back to you at your next meeting.
Well, thank you. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to necessarily, as you say, call for a vote on the waiver request. I think you can get the sense that if we were to bring it to the vote, the board would probably not be inclined to grant a waiver. And therefore, we would ask you work with our consultant to come up with responses so that we can move forward with the land, I'm sorry, the Stormwater Management Land Disturbance Hearing. We, we appreciate your time and effort, but I think the inclination at this point is that we proceed under the usual rules that would apply to this, this size property.
So I was getting a sense that the board might be willing to entertain some lesser waivers after we've quantified everything for you. Is that not the case?
You're perfectly free to bring anything less that you would like. And if you, if it would take you a month to do it and come back with some lesser waiver requirements, certainly we could consider it. But I do believe that there is an inclination on part of this board to try and maintain the requirements that are, that have been, we've agreed to as a community under the MS4 permit. I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. If, if we can be convinced that this can comply with the MS4 permit requirements, then I'm sure we'll consider anything you'd like to discuss with us. But I do sense there's a definite reluctance to waive these regulations tonight. So with that said, I'm willing to say...
Yes, we'd like a continuance for a month.
Why don't we agree to a continuance? Let's see about the digs.
Yes, we do need to date certain, so April 20, you have April 26th, and then I don't know in May what you're looking at.
Well, we have tentative dates scheduled for the 17th.
Correct.
Which is about a month. Assuming my colleagues are willing to agree to that date, which might have a bigger impact on them than it does on me, we can, I could take a motion to continue this hearing until the 16th. we can, I could take a motion to continue this hearing until the 16th. At 7 o'clock's still a good time, Mr. Merrick?
Yes, please, the 17th.
May 17th.
Yep, at 7 o'clock.
So, I would take a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we continue this hearing until May 17th at 7 o'clock.
This is moved and seconded for the Board to continue this hearing on the application for Storm Order Management Land Disturbance for 326 Orchard Street till the time certain of May 17th at 7:00 P.M. So, I will take, I will poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for the thorough conversation. On our agenda, we have is a request from abutters and neighbors of the Pickleball Court to request that we do some adjustment to hours that the court is available for public use. We received correspondence from Mr. Fitzgerald, who I see on. Also, we had correspondence from other folks who are residents of McCabe Avenue, I believe. We've tried to reach out to them as well. And I think we have at least one, Mr. Hughes, on. So, what I would ask then is for, start with Mr. Fitzgerald, if you could give us what your request is, what you would like us to consider. And then we will ask other folks who are abutters of Pickleball Court to also give their views. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, please.
Good evening, Chair McCaffrey and members of the Select Board. Thank you for having invited me to attend the meeting and having promptly put this on your agenda. Your courtesy in this regard is greatly appreciated and has not gone unnoticed. I appear before you this evening to request that you please alter the hours of operation for the Pickleball Court so that the Pickleball Courts will close at 7:00 P.M. on weeknights and 8:00 P.M. on weekends. Not asking for any change in the hours of operation for the tennis courts. Presently, these courts are all open until 10 o'clock. And the sound of the pickleball playing creates quite a bit of noise pollution. It's a very penetrating, piercing sound, a boinging sound. Quite different from the occasional crack of a baseball bat or the gentle sound from people playing tennis. This, this sound travels, it pierces, it goes through windows. It's somewhat incessant, unlike baseball where it's just occasional. Someone hits, hits the bat. Here, every few seconds, you get the boinging back. So, the graphite composite paddles hitting the hard pickleball makes a very disturbing repetitive sound, incessant. Hard to get to sleep with it. So, I think this is just an unintended consequence. Part of the project, when the courts were moved and tennis was converted to pickleball, I don't think people were really thinking about the sound consequences. And so, it's hard to get to sleep with the repetitive boinging. So, I'm just asking that the Select Board, please change the hours of operation for the Pickleball Court. So, close them at 7:00 P.M. on weeknights and 8:00 P.M. on the weekends. Thank you, Chair McCaffrey.
Thank you. So, we have other neighbors?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Kathy Smith. I'm one of the abutters, my husband and me. It sounds ridiculous, but the noise is just exactly how Mr. Fitzgerald says. You just don't even want to go outside. You can't enjoy your backyard, because it's constant. They're there at 6:00 A.M., they stay till 10:00 P.M. I really would love to see, you know, I know Chris Fogarty from the Rec Department looked up, you know, something about a screen, and it's very expensive, but possibly shrubbery or a windscreen and shrubbery or something that could possibly help with, to, you know, mitigate the noise, I guess.
So, you're talking more about, you know, all day long, rather than just hours of operation?
We're talking about something to help with the noise. Something to help with the constant noise. Whether it be shrubbery, you know, some, something to help with the noise. It's constant, it's all day long, all day long, all night long. I know it seems, if you don't live there, and it seems like it's, you know, not important, but it, it has definitely, you know, impacted our right to quiet enjoyment sitting outside in our backyard.
Chair McCaffrey, may I be heard? Another option you may want to consider in addition to changing the hours of operation would be to restrict the pickleball courts to Millis residents and up to one guest, out of town guest. You know, we're not invited to use Lake Winthrop in Holliston or to use in Sherbin. And, you know, yet these people coming here and making all this noise. And it, it's not a passive thing. Like, people want to play frisbee or something, that's fine. But this pickleball is really creating a lot of noise pollution. So, I would ask that the Board consider perhaps restricting use of the pickleball courts to Millis residents only and up to one guest.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Steve Smith, playing, gave up. Just want to sort of reiterate, the best way I could liken it to is the Geico commercial where you have cloggers upstairs. They have the family downstairs, and it's that clogging, you know, clogging. Because what you do, you have a lot of people over there. You have basically four courts, and everybody pays double. So, you have 16 people, and it's almost repetitiveness of ping pong versus a tennis, as far as the constant back and forth. So, you know, it's, it's like, there could be something done. And I know Chris has worked on looking up Acousta Fence and all this other stuff, and Acousta Block. I'm just wondering, I, for what I gather, that's a very costly item. But if there was any other way to maybe put up other items or around that corner, or to try to mitigate or disperse some of the sound that goes directly to the neighborhood? That's, you know, anything, any sort of like that that could be possibly done, whether it comes from, you know, CPA funds or new development funds where they have to put in trees, or marijuana money, or what, just, just something that might be able to mitigate, in addition to some of the hour things, just might be able to mitigate and disperse the direct sound wave that actually, they resonate pretty, pretty good if you're everybody, you're all here on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just making a note of the three things being suggested. One is hours of operation. One is some permanent sound mitigation, which is a, you know, there's a range of things we could do. And the other is limiting activity to Millis residents, particularly given the fact that Millis residents paid for the courts. Anyone else from the community who would like to, or the neighbors, would like to ask that them to speak up? Mr. Hughes?
Sure, I, I'm an early riser, and I'm early to bed. And I lay in bed, and I can hear the pickleball, you know, the ping, 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 as I'm laying in my bed at night. So, it is, it is tough, especially at night. I'm in work all day, so I know some people are around during the day. But at night, especially late, you know, it'd be really good if it could close down a little earlier.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, Eric Gordon, I live at 159 Plain Street, so I applaud this also. I, I like to play pickleball, I like the sport, but the noise is excessive. It's popular down the Cape, it's becoming extremely popular. This is our first year with it here. All the towns in the Cape are fighting with the same problem about the sound of the pickleball being close to residences. Something would have to be done about the sound. And again, I like to play the game, so I don't want to offend my neighbors by playing this game. You know, I would like to see something done about the sound. I want to, I would like to play pickleball without the guilt of bothering my neighbors. That's my part of it, and I do like the sport.
Great, thank you. Any others? Okay, how about, let's, I know we have the Rec Department Director here. Maybe you could give us some reflections on this issue?
Hi, Chris Fogarty, Millis Recreation Department Director. So, yes, this is, this is all a learning curve. You know, they're new, didn't really realize the impact that it might have on a neighborhood. This did just come to my attention a couple of weeks ago. And had a lovely conversation with Mr. Fitzgerald. Hopefully, I tried to answer some of his questions, but again, it's all new. So, what I did was immediately is I tried to look for resolution and see what other towns were doing, perhaps. Well, the one thing that popped up was a company called Acousta Block. And I reached out to them, I did receive a quote, and on Thursday. And I, we went out, we measured a couple of, a couple of dimensions, you know, going along the pathway and halfway down the court and, and/or along the pathway, or the entire length of what we call the Frog Pond Side, which is really where the street is. So, that ranged between about $70,000 to $30,000. So, but right now, there really isn't any funding to pay for it at this time. I'm not ignoring it, I, I feel for you. I, you know, I wanted this as much as everybody else. Again, learning curve, I didn't realize. So, and that the last thing I want to do is upset a neighborhood, upset a town. So, I'm definitely on top of this in looking for resolutions, whether it be perhaps putting in some shrubbery. I don't know if the wind, the wind fencing is going to be that solution. But again, we're looking into it. What I suggest for right now is maybe curbing the usage of the courts. My suggestion would be, and I reread the signs, I reread everything. I looked at everything that was going on, what my programs were doing. My suggestion would be from 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. during the week. And maybe 8:00 A.M. and 9:00 P.M. on the weekends. I've already contacted John Angler as soon as I found out that this was becoming an issue. And normally, they would turn the lights on until 10 o'clock. And I said, "Do not touch them, don't touch them." They go off at 9:15 right now. And I requested that they don't turn them on any later. I knew we were having this meeting, so, you know, going forward. I don't, I don't know what the, what the answer is, but I did not want them to turn it on any later at this point. Yeah, I mean, I'm open to anything. I don't know if it's going to happen right away. But whatever I can do, whatever suggestions you have, whatever policies, whatever signage we want to put up, I will do whatever.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gordon?
I certainly understand this is new and stuff, so I got, I have no ill will about this at all. Just, you know, moving forward with this. It is the lights that draw the players at night. This is the only lighted pickleball court like east of Worcester. So, we have people coming to play here from everywhere. It's, it's a big draw, because those lights are on at night. Little of the only court around.
Certainly sounds like what we would call an attractive nuisance. Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, Chair McCaffrey, thank you. He's, the people are coming from all around. They're, they're, it's like you say, it's an attractive nuisance. So, I think curtailing the hours, you know, I would prefer 7:00 P.M. on weeknights instead of 8:00 P.M. It's a very loud sound. I, I, I go to bed by 7:30. My daughter's an elementary school teacher, she goes to bed early too. But I think restricting it to Millis residents is going to decrease the amount of the boinging sound. There'd just be less people. So, if Millis residents are going to use it within the hours, you know, we'll all have to live with that. But there's really no need to have everybody from Worcester coming here to Millis to inconvenience us with that sound. So, I'd ask you to consider that also, please.
Thank you. Yes. Anyone else? Somebody asked, I'm sorry?
No, I, Mr. McCaffrey, I would just say that I echo that statement. There's a group from Westwood that come at 6:00 A.M. And there's a group from Sharon that stay from like 8:00 to 11:00. So, they are traveling from very far away.
Well, I'm, we don't have anything against our neighboring towns, but that doesn't mean we want to create a magnet for them to come and disturb the neighborhoods. Mr. Jermaine, you took your udoff.
If I may comment, I certainly think this was a situation of unintended consequences, as Ms. Fogarty has pointed out. And I certainly, from my perspective, have no problem with changing some of the hours. I would ask a couple of things. I understand how the paddles and the ball, if you will, are made. I know that the design, as Ms. Fogarty would understand, to kill someone or cripple them at least, because that's what she was doing to me the last time I played. But that's a secondary issue. The truth is, I'm wondering if there is a different ball or a different type of racket that could be used, would help to mitigate the sound. I have no idea in this area, I'm just asking. So, that would be number one. Number two, I do know that there are noise cancellation devices available. Whether they work on a scale like this, I have no idea. So, I just throw that out there. And number three, I am very much open to changing the hours and, if necessary, restricting it to Millis residents only. So, those are my views at this point.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, there are several different paddles on the market. They call them green paddles. They're more prevalent down south. I just think that, anything, I mean, they have foam rubber balls versus the regular pickleball. I just think policing something like that in a public space versus a private setting like a condo association or something like that could be very difficult to do. But yes, they do have countless numbers of different rackets. And they're actually called green rackets, because of the noise and different type of ball. So, I mean, those are, these are all options. And like Tracy said, it's just, no one really knew until, until it became a popular thing. So, that's, I just wanted to chime in on that, that there are several different racket options and things like that. I just think that would be very difficult to monitor or police or-
Mr. Chairman? Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure, just, I'm not sure that we're going to get the complete solution. And I'm not sure that, there's a number of good ideas here, right? I'm not precluding any of them. In the short run, it seems that the limiting the hours is the, is the most likely to address the immediate issue. But it doesn't seem to me as though, or it seems to me that we need to develop, whether it's fencing or trees or something, to address the problem all day long, which is not quite the same thing as 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. And I suspect if we're not the only court west of Worcester or east of Worcester that's open at 10:00, that we won't be having folks come here. Again, we have nothing against folks, because I'll, I'm willing to wager that there may be some Millis residents who are showing up at 6:00 o'clock too. But in any event, Mr. Jermaine, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I understand that it's difficult to police, perhaps, what's used. But I would ask that perhaps Ms. Fogarty and some others would look into some of these other racket ball combinations that might be helpful in helping to mitigate the noise. I don't see why, if they determine that it would make a big difference, we can't establish some regulations in that regard, because we have to be sensitive to what the neighbors in that area are experiencing. Because we have to be sensitive to what the neighbors in that area are experiencing, something we hadn't anticipated.
Okay. I'd ask if anyone else has a comment?
Um, yes, I do, it's Deborah Huron.
Yes, please.
I just started using the pickleball courts and it's very interesting. But how would you try to actually monitor whether they're residents or not? I mean, would, wouldn't that be an additional work to have somebody, somebody would have to be there? Or you'd have to set up some kind of system to assure their residents?
A very perceptive comment. Just putting up a sign that says residents only doesn't get the job done.
Exactly, and you know.
And I don't think anybody wants the rec director to turn into the, you know, the pickleball patrol. That's not, not the goal.
Well, and certainly not, and it is a very social sport. And, you know, if, when you, as people pointed out, you play with four on one court. So you have to say, do I need three other Millis residents so I can play?
Right.
You know, so, so anyway, just, it, it, I, I have my sympathies to people that live near there. But I've lived, I have a house in the Riviera area and I have planes going over my house all the time. And unfortunately, we have to put up with it. But anyway, just, and the, the thought of like, the other problem is the green rackets and special balls. Again, who's going to police that?
Right.
So I think the best option would be to delay ours. But, um, you know, it's in, it's a sport for the elders and they like to be up at six o'clock in the morning, especially in the summertime, unless it's going to get warmer. But just, just pointing out some of the, I was watching on television and I just found the link to, to give my comments. But I do enjoy the sport and I just started.
Appreciate your comments. You know, hold on, Mr. Fitzgerald, I mean, I, I think that we're not, again, I think that from the point of view of the board, perhaps we're going to have to work with the rec department and the rec committee to come up with some broader guidelines. But restricting hours, from my perspective, is a fairly straightforward response. It's not the end of the story, but at least it recognizes the fact that, as we can tell, members of the neighborhood are really being imposed upon here by six AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Chair McCaffrey. Yes, I just wanted to add, you know, notwithstanding it may be difficult to enforce, that doesn't mean that you can't, you know, have a sign up there that says it's open to Millis residents only. And I mean theoretically, you could have something where there's a three hundred dollar fine if a non-Millis resident used it. So, I mean, I wouldn't let how to enforce it be a, a bar to stopping what you characterize correctly, I think, as an attractive nuisance. We've got ports of people coming from all around the state to come to our pickleball courts and use it repetitively all day long and late into the night. So I think restricting the hours is a good first step. But I think you're going to have a lot less intensity of the noise if you restrict it to Millis residents. And each Millis resident could have one guest. So if you had two Millis residents, you have two guests, then you have the people to play the pickleball. So I'd encourage you to take both steps. Certainly, the hours would be a very good first step. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I would ask my colleagues then at this point, I do think this has been an important conversation. We have a lot of other business to conduct. I would like us to take at least a position on one or more of these suggestions. And I would ask Mr. Jermaine and Ms. Underhill if you have any last thoughts before we decide what we're going to do in the short run?
Uh, thank you, Chairman McCaffrey. I think the, I think a lot of great points were made. It certainly does sound annoying. I think to kind of echo everyone else, I think in yourself, the easiest thing is definitely to impose a limit on the hours. I don't know that it's reasonable to be able to police, so to speak, the, whether it's a Millis resident, what kind of equipment they're using. If that is something we can reasonably do, then it certainly doesn't sound like a bad idea. But in terms of using resources, I would think doing the change in hours at minimum would be a good step in the first direction. I'm also interested in the just noise mitigation that Mrs. Fogarty is going to look into in general. Because if, especially shrubs or something, if it's really going to help diffuse some of that sound, I would, I would think that that would be very reasonable to do at least. So those are my thoughts at this point.
Well, is, I think that, I think the board would like to ask the director of recreation and the town administrator to work on a more comprehensive look at this, considering all these items. I personally am willing to move forward with the hours of operation, at least for this, at this point in time, perhaps to suggest an eight AM to eight PM. And then, and I would call it just seven days a week to make it simple. But I'm happy to have any other, if anyone wants to second that motion?
I'll second that.
That motion? So it's been moved and seconded, discussion? Yes, Jermaine, Mrs. Jermaine has actually raised her hand.
Oh, far be it from me to intrude while she's muted. That's something to be thought about very positively at this stage.
There we go, sorry, sorry. Having had a little involvement in these courts during the building process, we also talked about turning the lights off earlier to discourage people from playing too late. And I think that if you want to change the hours, you need to turn the lights off.
I think that's assumed that that's what would happen.
I mean, they're on timers, they're on timers, John Angler's school can do it.
We'll have to work with the school committee to make the change.
Okay, just wanted to suggest it.
Oh, that's a good idea. So there's a motion on the floor, at least for now, well, not for now, as long as, you know, permanently, that we restrict, the open hours will be eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week, effective tomorrow.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
One of the, or at least one of the individuals had mentioned seven PM. Now, I'd like to see it go to eight, but I'd like to at least understand on the seven PM, is it something we can try to eight PM and see if it works? Or was seven PM chosen for a very specific reason? I don't know what that answer is.
Especially Fitzgerald? Yes, if I may respond to Mr. Jermaine. I, I chose it because I go to bed at seven o'clock and I'm trying to go to bed. And the, the noise is keeping me up and my daughter goes to bed very early too. She's an elementary school teacher. So weeknights, having a repetitive boinging sound past seven PM, it's very, it's very disturbing, it's very jarring. It's a very penetrating sound. So certainly at eight PM is better than ten PM. And my understanding is the chair has asked the rec department to look into more, other solutions to mitigate the sound. So this is certainly progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we have a, Ms. Fogarty?
On the same thing, at seven right now, I already have programs that are running, so eight PM. So I would just please ask that you, let's try to eight PM right now, because I do have something running from five to eight. If you, if you make that decision to close at seven, then it's not going to work well for me.
Thank you.
At this point.
So at this point, the motion is eight AM to eight PM. So what I'll do is I'm going to call on the, call for the vote. All those in favor, oh, I'll have to go, I'm sorry, I got to poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. McCaffrey?
And then we would ask the town administrator and the rec department director to come up with a longer range plan and realize that that, in all likelihood, will require the development of an appropriation. Because I think that restricting the hours gets us to one issue addressed, but it doesn't address the noise factor all day long. And we really need to work on that. And so I think that just from the point of view of the, of the neighbors, we need to come up with a, a solution that is a little bit more permanent. I don't think, I, personal opinion, that doesn't mean extending the hours again. It's just a matter of take care of the noise from eight to eight. And we'll work with the rec director, the school department and the town administrator to make sure the lights go off so that we don't have people there. So thank you all very much for attending, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair McCaffrey, members of the select board, appreciate it.
I had a sneaking suspicion that this would take more than fifteen minutes, ironically. Okay, so moving on to the next item. The next item we have on our agenda is a conversation with the council on aging to talk a little bit more about the budget request that has been proposed by the council and the department head. Last time we met, the board had a conversation about the budget request. And the budget request really is around the above level service budget request, which, you know, we had encouraged you to develop, at least I had, so now we have it. And there's some, some issues that the other members of the board would just like to, like to address. But if you could, just as swiftly as possible, just give us the outline of what you hope to accomplish with this budget request for an additional, basically it's forty-eight thousand dollars.
What we really want to address is the space staffing and funding problems of the senior center. Our goal is to provide more programming. But if you're familiar with the senior center, you know, we only have three programming rooms. Two of those are occupied during our hours of operation, which are eight to two. We have the drop-in room, which is occupied between eight and one. Lunchroom occupied between eleven and one. So really, we don't have space for programming. So we're looking to add additional hours so we will have more time to do programs. The space issue, we really got to take care of the staffing issues. If we take care of the space and the time issues, we're going to have to staff that. And also, we're going to have to fund it. So that's why I asked for three thousand out of my expense line, postage. I can use my formula grant to fund the additional program that we would be hopefully providing.
So basically, the, the request really is relating to additional staffing for program development and program offering. That the hours, additional hours are what gives us the opportunity for more programs because the rooms are occupied at the current hours. And the only way for us to really do an outreach to get more programming is to have more time. And obviously, if you could use the state grant for the intention, for which it was, for the purpose for which it was intended, then, then that would also be beneficial. So that's the comprehensive request. Now, there was some conversation around the fact that the request turned up in two places. One was in the above level service and the other was in the marijuana impact. I don't think the intent was to ask for it twice, right?
No, not at all, not at all. It was an after, to add it onto the marijuana.
It's really looking for a source of funding, rather than ask for additional funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you have the chair of the board, council on aging as well, Mr. Lannan, anything you'd like to share with us in addition besides? And it would be good if we weren't muted. There we go.
Not muted.
Yeah.
Just one quick thing on your previous, if you Google noise from pickleball courts, you get about a hundred and fifty pages of towns across the country that are doing the same thing.
There's a lot of learning out there, huh?
Yeah, there's a lot of resources.
Yeah.
Yeah, as you mentioned, the, this additional funding is, is for an additional position also, right Patty? This, as you, as you know, like, they've been short-staffed down there for quite some time. And Patty and Becky, our outreach coordinator, have to spend a lot of time doing, you know, non-programming things. So this new, this new position would, would assist in all those various duties that are not direct programming duties, which I think would be a real help to Patty and Becky in expanding the programming down there.
Very good. All right, questions from my colleagues on the board? Mr. Jermaine, you're not muted, so I assume you have some things you'd like to address?
I forgot to mute, but that's okay. Yes, I do have some questions, and that is, the first one would be, given that we have limited it to no access at VMB, where are these programs taking place at this time and where would they take place if we added another person?
Well, like I said, we do have a space issue. Two of our rooms are occupied for a good point, a good part of the day. If we were able to add from one to four, we would be able to have access to three of the rooms. We could provide a lot of programming. And the permanent building committee and my council on aging board had really worked hard and looked at some kind of options for different programming. And we have a lot of great ideas and we really want to get that going.
I guess my question though is, given that the building is basically closed now, how would this person be used?
Well, it would take some time to train that person. If we were to get that person and say to buy one, which, you know, it will probably look a more like August to, before we could find the right person, it's going to take some time to train that person. There is a lot of duties that would be requested of that person. I did, with my budget, I submitted a job description. It is quite intense. Right now, you only have one person who knows the complete operations of the senior center, and that's really not a good practice. We really need somebody else that knows the workings of the senior center and that would be part of our duties. So the training would be very intense, Pete.
And is this training for this person? If we deferred until, say, the November town meeting, because town hall may not be open for a while to come, would that impact you particularly to put it off by six months?
Like, like I said, Pete, the training is intense and I'm trying to be optimistic, saying that hopefully by the end of summer, we will be open, fingers crossed. I don't think it would be a waste of time because we could use another person. We only have actually two and a half staff people there right now. And it's quite difficult maintaining the day-to-day duties and, and just trying to take care of day-to-day things. So we really need another person. We've been short-staffed since January two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Underhill, any questions?
Uh, yes. So since January of two thousand nineteen, so did you previously have another person?
Yes, we did. January two thousand nineteen, we had one retire and right after her, a couple of days after her, another one found another position. By the time we fulfilled those positions in May and June, we had another worker go out. So we've always had four people there. And currently, we're working with three. Did that answer your question, Erin?
I, I said, yes, I, I'm thinking, sorry. The wheels are spinning, give me a second. So if I'm understanding correctly? So if I'm understanding correctly, what this would do would essentially free you, would you be the person that's more freed up to be doing programming, or is that the reverse?
I think I have to understand since I've been short of person since 2019, I have taken on the clerical duties, in addition to my own duties. So it's been double duty since January 2019.
Okay. So I assume that, I shouldn't assume anything, but if you lost, if you went down somebody in 2019, I imagine your budget must have changed in that it went down that you only have three people instead of four?
Correct, correct. What we did was we added hours. I got the outreach from 17.5 to 20 hours, and we got myself from 32 to 35.5. So we kind of offset it like that, but added the duties to myself and outreach.
Those added hours that Patty and Becky were working were to do the, the work that was being done previously by other people.
Okay. And right now, I mean, you're still, you are doing some levels of programming now, correct? People are, are meeting outside? Is that what you're doing?
Fuel appointment only, and we can have outside activities, we will. But people are coming in. We have done quite a few fuel assistance applications where we have to have people come in, meet in a different room. We're still doing the fitness room. We still are active. But things are a little bit harder to do because you have to go take somebody's temperature out in the parking lot, allow them in, so it's really a bunch of added steps.
And since this is by appointment, is there, is it hard to get everybody in when they want to be in? Is there a, a very high demand?
No, people are still very cautious, our seniors are very cautious. I think once everybody gets vaccinated, that's going to change.
Okay.
People then will want to come in.
Thank you.
But we, we have had some outdoor activities too, like a walking, walking club. And last week, we had a book swap that was outside, and the books had all been properly quarantined. You have the bread pickup weekly still, right Patty?
Yes, we do. And yoga, we just started last week.
Outdoor yoga, so. And we've had some, some pretty neat Zoom things too. One of the recent ones was fellow, he was a painter, a painter, and people who signed up for it were given a kit for oil painting. And he basically did an oil painting lesson and a Zoom meeting, and I think we had like, we had almost a dozen people sign up for that, I believe, and it went over really well. So those are the kinds of things that we've been able to do during the pandemic.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Germaine.
Patty, you said that your hours were increased when you lost the other person. Am I to assume that your hours will decrease if we bring on a new person? So you'll go back, you'll revert back to what your hours were?
If you take a look, Karen, the next page on that, the next section would show what we're requesting, the above level service. Hmm, that's one. It's the level funded, and right below that is the above. If you could scroll down. Oh, it's right there, Karen.
Okay.
I have it on me.
There you go. The above level request, it would increase if we were open till four o'clock Monday through Thursday, directors' hours would go to 37, and we would have an additional operations manager at 29.5. That would allow us to be fully staffed, properly staffed.
Okay, so this is not just adding a person, it's adding hours, it's adding other capabilities that don't presently exist that you feel would help to make the operation a more robust one for the seniors.
Right, right, the center would be open more hours.
It's been a goal to, to open the center full-time. I mean, open from eight to two is really not feasible. It's really hard to service within those hours because we don't have the space. But if you open it up a little bit more, then we can do the programming.
Well, my understanding of the proposal is not to get pigeonholed in just to the open hours of operation. Hours of operation lead to more program. Staff addition leads to more innovation in programming, as well as doing the, the work you're doing on outreach, transportation, training of folks, you know, collaboration with other departments to try and get programs going. I mean, my view is that this request brings the senior services up to a level that we can really say is at least beginning to fully respond to the growing senior population. Now, I don't see it as necessarily tied to the date on which we can open the, the building again. Because if we don't lay the groundwork for it by, we can't just open the building and not have any program plans. I mean, we have to know what we're going to do when the building finally opens again. And it's anybody's guess as to whether this building can open in September or November or whenever. And if the board is of the view that it's unlikely to be July, then maybe waiting a couple of months to September or something, you know, is, is viable. To my way of thinking, that's just pinching pins. You know, I think my colleagues understand my feeling that it's time for us to send a message to miller seniors that the, the center that is devoted to them is open, the regular hours, just like communities around us. And it's relatively small amount of money. It's not insubstantial, but it's certainly something that I believe we've reached the point where the town has the ability to fund this. That's just my opinion. But we have the obligation tonight as a board of select, I'm sorry, as a select board, to decide on what our budget recommendation is going to be, which is why we've invited the folks from the council on aging to come and address some of the questions that were raised at our last meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Germaine.
I would propose then that I move that we adopt the recommendation of $48,672.38 for the variety of reasons that have just been made for the council on aging or senior center for the next fiscal year.
So it's moved and seconded for the board to recommend the budget, which includes the $48,000 above-level service request. That will go into our budget and be presented for review by the finance committee. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Is there any discussion, sir?
No further discussion, this is just for our budget at this point.
But you didn't open it up to?
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Thank you.
I take that back. Ms. McGinnis, go ahead.
We've talked before, Mr. Chair, that before the police and fire chiefs are given extra funds for increased staffing or new bodies, they are to provide a list of what would be done with these funds. And could, through the chair, could someone explain to me what Ms. Patty's extra hours, what will she do with those? That's my first question, Mr. Chair. If I could have that answered before I move on, or do you want me to continue asking questions?
Yeah, just, just put your questions forward so that we can answer them.
Okay. And I thought that each director in town was to prepare a sort of how-to manual in case they don't wake up or something. I know that was discussed when you and I sat next to each other, Mr. Chair. And could you please explain that? I'd like to hear that. And also, if you could explain how more senior town residents would, equals more business. I don't, I, I've talked to a lot of seniors about this, Mr. Chair, as I've explained to you many times. And a few tours were given to some senior residents, and they have not applied, they've not applied yet. So maybe it's just because there's a COVID and they're not. But, and they talk about needing more money, and I think you discussed it, or it was discussed before, could the council on aging consider doing emailing of their very helpful moves letter? And are, are they assuring somehow that more hours and more money toward the senior center equals more people that will go there? And that would be, that would especially helpful if we could get a sense of what Ms. Patty thinks will draw me and my senior friends there. And you might remember also that the library prepared, prepared a survey prior to their even requesting a building. The bodies that came in, in and out, what was done, they didn't have room for this or that. And I, I sure look like as a senior to receive a survey, and many of my senior friends would also. So we're putting, we're putting a lot of money for logical reasons, in my personal opinion and from hearing from others, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So still, the motion has been made, but we'll have the further discussion if you'd like to respond, Patty, or Bird, I mean.
Well, I, I think in terms of what Kathy's saying, can we show what this is going to, how we're going to measure the success of this? Our numbers will show that. I'm pretty confident in our work with the permanent building committee and our board that the programming that we have started to put together for the new senior center would be very beneficial to the miller seniors, and it will, it, it will increase our numbers. To quantify that, we would just have to, you know, do our statistics and show to the select board and the town that the things we are doing are working. I don't know how else to quantify it, but by trying to start doing it and then showing with statistics. I can't remember all Kathy's questions. Kathy?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that I want to be sure, and I'm going to direct this to the town administrator. The council on aging, you know, gave its budget presentation to the select board several months ago, which described the programs, described the service, had the statistics on the number of people using the service, described the above-level service request, the number of hours, has a job description for the operations manager, as well as some capital requests, and now it's supplemented by this information here, which is expanded programming. Has this information, well, let me ask it differently. I would ask specifically that this information, all of this data, you know, connected with the budget request be provided to the members of the finance committee, who will also be taking a look at this. So I, I think that quite a bit of information has been put together, and there's a disconnect in what's been provided to the finance committee. Let's, let's try to address that.
Yeah, we can, Mr. Chairman, we can certainly check on that and make sure that the finance committee has received all the relevant information in regards to, to their above-level service requests. So I will, I will check, I will confer with the finance director tomorrow and make sure that they have received all the relevant information, and if not, we'll forward that to the finance committee tomorrow.
And, you know, I would expect certainly the finance committee will give this consideration, and they will make their independent recommendation. So that being said, it has been moved and seconded. I'm going to call the, roll of the board to take a vote. And again, the vote is to include this in the board's budget recommendation.
Does someone else want to speak?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to, Mr. Chairman, for having.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, thank you. Was it, I, I thought I heard the comment that the budget has decreased since 2019. Is that what? Because I pulled up the history of the council on aging budget, actually all the town budgets, because I have that open about half my life now, it seems. But I looked from FY18 to FY21, and, you know, it's grown by eight and a half percent, six percent, 11.3 percent, and four percent. I mean, the average over that time is 7.5 percent growth. The only department that grew more was the police department, and just barreling, that was with the addition of two officers. In, in comparison, the, the education budget grew by 3.8 percent, eight percent. So just around half with the council on aging. The budget has grown, we haven't been shrinking that budget over the years. I do agree that everything's been said about additional services requests, but the comment that it's decreased.
I don't recall saying that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall anybody saying that.
I asked the question, Chairman McCaffrey, if I may.
Yes.
I asked the question because I was confused about the number of hours with the additional person that had been there. And what Patty had mentioned is that the lack of person, so to speak, was absorbed in other areas. So she took on more hours, and it sounds like a few other things happened in lieu of that person.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kozinski.
Thank you. For me, just, I can probably shed a little, a little more light on that. What essentially happened, and I think what Patty was summarizing, was that just as we were entering into the COVID pandemic and the closures, and we initiated a reduction in municipal departments, certainly in the, in the VMB, that there was a vacancy that had occurred in the senior center. And as opposed to hiring an additional person in the midst of that, of that situation, just certain hours of individuals from the department were elevated in order to account and cover for, for that person that was out. And that's why, that's why even though they have less overall staff in that department currently, that was basically a measure done during the COVID pandemic in order to just cover the department during that reduction in, in funding. And again, that was the temporary funding back last fall.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
This is Carol Johnson, the finance director. I just want to be sure everybody knows that the finance committee received all budget requests back in February, and they currently have this posted on the finance department website under the FY22 department budget requests. So all information is on the, has been received by the finance committee and is posted on the website.
Does that include the supplemental material, though, that we're seeing now?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. McGinnis.
I'd like to say that I have, I, I thought I could listen to all the meetings, and I, and I'm looking forward to receiving this from the town administrator. But I, I have not seen anything about what new proposals will be done by the director. I saw what the new person will be doing, but this change to Carol, I know she's talking about the money requests and everything, but I, as a member of the finance committee, I just want to know what, what's going to be done with this extra money. And thank you for saying that you're going to provide that with for us, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I just would like to respond to one thing that was said by a prior speaker about the percentage increases versus the school department. I understand that the percentages are different. The school department percentages are talking about tens of thousands of dollars of additional expenditure, and the senior center is costing thousands of dollars, if, if that. If you have a mismatch to go, to begin with, increases that are of the size we've been talking about are inadequate to meet the need. That's just my opinion at this point. And this is a point in time where I'm asking the community and the finance committee to consider making a significant step vis a vis senior services in this, this town. So we've had quite a good discussion here. Obviously, there is some interest in this issue, which I'm sure will be discussed for, with the finance committee later this week. We had a motion on the floor from the select board to recommend, this is part of the budget recommendation from the select board, so I'm going to poll the board at this point. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you all for the conversation, and we'll be resuming the discussion on Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. We're obviously running quite behind. We're obviously running quite behind schedule here. Is Mr. Mushnick still with us?
He is.
Thank you, Mr. Mushnick. Would you like to wait another minute or two?
Not a problem.
Karen, I saw earlier we had somebody on who wanted to talk to us about the ferry houses.
Yes.
Is she still here?
I see Danielle, I see your, your, there she is. Hi, Danielle.
Hi, I'm going to be talking a little bit quietly because my daughter's sleeping next door.
I was trying to get this on, don't want to either wait till 10:30, so please.
I very much appreciate it, and thank you. So I'm requesting permission to, so first to introduce who I am. I'm a Girl Scout leader in town, and I'm also the service council coordinator for the Millis Girl Scouts. And what I'm trying to organize is a project for all of the Millis Girl Scouts who would like to participate, would be creating a ferry house, and I'm seeking permission to make an installation of these ferry houses on the town hall lawn for one week. And anybody is welcome to come and enjoy the houses, and we are requesting or suggesting donations to the food pantry as admission to this, our installation.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs., Mr. Parry, yes, Karen.
Yes, so I've been going back with Danielle a bit, and she has gone through a lot trying to plan this event, so we'd really like to make this work for her. I've spoken to the head of our DPW, our building management provider, Paul Sims, and we've looked, and we feel that a good week to do this, while it was requested, for the week of May 8th to May 15th, we have asked Ms. Frappier if she minds moving it to the first week in June so that it's after Memorial Day and all of the Memorial Day celebrations and prep for that. And she was amenable, I think, Danielle?
Yes.
Other than that, we would be happy to host it as far as the department's on this end.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
So what specific date is, first week in June, what is that? What is the first week, what's the date?
I guess any time after Memorial Day, we thought, would be acceptable. I don't have the calendar in front of me, Danielle.
Sorry, I'm trying to get the calendar on. I can't see it. So Tuesday, June 1st is on a Tuesday, and then, so if you're looking for like a full Sunday through Saturday type week, it would be like June 6th through the 12th. Yes.
Does that still work on your end?
Does that work for you?
It does.
I'm confused. Her letter says the 8th to the 15th of May.
Correct, but we want to hold it after Memorial Day, Pete, so that we're not affecting the, the memorials out front.
Okay.
That's all.
So I think it's a wonderful idea. Having had children and grandchildren build ferry houses, they're kind of neat. I will not be building a ferry house if you're looking for a secret advisor, because it would be a disaster. In any event.
But you could donate to the food pantry on their behalf.
Do that. Be happy to do that, yes.
Donate to the food pantry and come enjoy the house of this.
So I would take a motion from the board to authorize, is this going to be for the Girl Scouts or?
All Millis Girl Scouts that wish to participate, correct?
For all Millis Girl Scouts to host the ferry house exhibit on the town meeting, on the town, I'm going to make the motion, on the town, on the town hall from June 6th to when?
The 12th.
June 12th. So that's the motion.
Second.
I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Danielle, very much for being patient with us.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
As, as, hopefully your daughter will sleep well.
Thank you.
Danielle, take care.
Bye, thank you. Bye.
Mr. Mushnick?
I'm here.
You are, 8 o'clock, here we are.
Close.
Yep. Thank you for your patience.
Not a problem. It's been an interesting evening. I should come through these more often.
That's your, that's your prerogative. We have a, a request from you, and you, if you'd like to just describe to the board generally what the, the offer is, it's a magnificent offer or a gift, which has been, I think, vetted through the cemetery committee, so help us to understand what, what we're doing here, what your proposal is.
Sure. Thank you for having me this evening, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the members of the select board. The Winneker family, longtime residents of the town, have rightfully undertaken the cost for this project, which would basically be another walkway equal to, and actually greater than what we have currently. The Winnekers, if you can see at the bottom, have purchased almost all of the lots along the western route, western side, actually, of the Jewish section, Section 8. And in order to access them now, they have to walk down either, it's a rough area, it's ungraded, it's, there's a lot of undercut brush and whatnot, or come from the current existing walkway and walk down the hill. And topographically, it's just a nightmare. So on a good day, when it's hard gravel or hard ground, it's fine, but with the grass and everything, and senior citizens typically walking through the cemetery, it's not a good idea. So the Winnekers decided that they would like to go and visit all the time, and in doing so, you know, how to come up all the way and do it safely. And their proposal is to donate to the Town of Millis for no charge, a walkway equal to, actually greater in length than the other one that they're currently matching it exactly. But this walkway, because it's the access for the town equipment to currently get to the grave sites, would need some way to make it without driving on the concrete. So they proposed putting recycled asphalt on either side of the concrete walkway, which will be allowing the machine tires to go down that instead of the walkway, and then the machine can access the rest of the graves. For example, we had one yesterday, and we have a funeral tomorrow, and for them to get there, they have to drive over the grass and whatnot, so this will make it a lot easier and better for the town, for the residents of Millis who would like to access that. The other plus, if you look to the left of where that proposed walkway will be, there's a new section that the town just regraded and did a fantastic job of getting it ready for new graves. This will allow access to that down the road very easily as well, instead of having to drive around the back, on the, the back road. And coming up, they'll be able to park and kind of walk down that walkway and possibly have a set of steps further on down the road to access the left side or the western side of the, of that walkway. The Winnekers have decided that they'll take care of all of the expenses. We've had multiple meetings regarding it, and it's just, it's a win-win. So we're looking tonight for your blessing so that we can continue forward and get this moving on.
Looking away here and trying to get going again. So just to further elucidate here, I, my question is, not only are the Winnekers willing to sponsor and fund the program, but there's also an active group ready to do the work, is that right?
That is correct. We've got two great contractors, Cliff Burnett, Millis resident, and Danny White, one of our neighbors up on Bogastow. Both have signed on. Both wonderful contractors, you'll be pleased with the, with the outcome.
Any other questions from the members of the board? No questions?
Chairman?
Mr. McKay, yes.
Thank you. As you remember, as you're stamped on the cemetery committee, and Aaron can attest, this has been vetted numerous amount of times. And this is going on with the plans of the original cemetery. When the Jewish section was donated or blessed for the Jewish residents, this walkway was actually designed, in the original design of it, and it's, it's keeping with that design that this will be built in that area. It will have no effect, no detrimental effect on the DPW. It will just enhance and make it better and easier transportation, as Mr. Mushnick stated, to get the equipment in and out of the, in, in that area. So again, like Mr. Mushnick stated, this is a win-win, and it's a great donation, and it's been talked about for many, many years, all the years that I've been on the cemetery committee. It's always been talked about, and I want to thank the Winneker family. Mrs. Winneker came to us, I'd say about, I think about a year ago, when her husband passed. Right away, she wanted to do this, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask you for your comments, because I think it's important for us to not only recognize the length of time that it's been spent on this, but looking at the proposal, it's, it's a, it's a very, I hate to say exciting, because somehow that, to me, doesn't quite make, get it, but it's a very well-appreciated effort by this family and the team putting this proposal together to provide this enhancement to not only the Jewish section, but the cemetery as a whole. So thank you very much.
That's true, Mr. Chairman. You're right, there was, it's a concerted effort for the whole committee worked on this. Wayne Simpson has it, if you drive up there now, you can see stakes and, and he's got lines, it's, we've done, we've done a lot of work, and it wasn't just the Winnekers or just myself, it was the whole team of the cemetery commissioner have done really good work on this. Very proud of them.
Yep, I agree. Any other comments from the board members, or I'll take a motion? It would be the motion to accept the gift on behalf of the Town of Millis.
I move that we accept this very generous gift to the Town of Millis from the Winneker family to implement the walkway as shown on this diagram.
Well, second that, I think it's a very wonderful gift. I also appreciate the fact that the DPW director and his team have reviewed this and likewise support it in the fashion that they do. So I think overall, as he indicated, it's a win-win for the town.
So it's been moved and seconded. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. And thank you very much, Mr. Mushnick, for coming forward with this plan. I would ask the town administrator also to prepare for signature by each member of the board, a thank you note to be sent to the family, just to further note the, their generosity in making this contribution. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll let the family know tomorrow morning, and we'll get started on this right away. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. You can save it the rest of the, you know.
I might.
Next item on our agenda is moving to the election warrant. We have a number of warrants that we need to go over, and we need to finalize both with respect to posting and with respect to forwarding to the finance committee for its review while we watch the penguins dance, whatever they are here.
Screen saver.
So this is the first item, really, is the election warrant. And Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the board's packet, agenda packet, is the election warrant for the board's approval and signature for the annual town election, which will be held on Monday, the 10th day of May 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For the positions of moderator for one year, select board for three years, school committee for three years, another school committee for three years, board of health for three years, library trustee for three years, and planning board for five years. And it's before you this evening for your approval and signature.
Thank you very much. So I would make a motion that the board approve the town election warrant as presented by the town administrator, and ask the members of the board to execute that document in person.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. McCaffrey, yes. I forgot me. Okay, well, that's taken care of. That'll be also available for signature along with the bonds for the board members over the next day or two to get down to town hall and sign up. When is the actual posting?
Yeah, we actually, these need to be posted or picked up by the constable by, I'd say by the end of the day, Wednesday, so we would need to have the board sign it either tomorrow or Wednesday morning at the latest.
Okay. Monday or Tuesday, we'll try, get folks down there. Hold up, today's Monday.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that we've thoroughly vetted this, this time, that there are no, everything is exactly what you want on there.
Yeah, well, it was, it was right before. We had a little snafu in the information that we shared.
I just want to make sure this one is edited properly.
Can you just scroll down? This one, or up?
Up.
Well, we had, I think we had a reference of the select in the last one. Okay, it looks like it's okay. We'll just double check as we sign it.
Yep.
Okay, scroll down, I guess.
And, and I will note that along, along with signing this, you have many other things to sign, so plan a little bit of time to come in.
Right.
About 20 minutes.
Is there cookies or something?
I can bake some cookies.
Is it two?
You probably won't like them, I'm not much of a baker.
Can we, can we possibly get rid of the, the man behind chair and vice chair?
Oh, yeah, usually it says chair.
I think we can do that, yes.
Took me a minute to realize what you were saying. Yes, we usually put chair, so we'll, we'll ask them to change that.
That would be good. Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the town meeting warrant articles. This is, purposes of finalizing the warrant, the board will take its votes on the warrant articles themselves at a subsequent meeting. From this point in time, we are going to look through the warrant articles to make sure that they are, the warrant is complete, and we can forward it again to the finance committee for its review. So we could pull up the warrant, this is the town meeting warrant now. Mr. Gazinski, just talk us a little bit about sort of what we got to do, what we have to sign, because for this purpose, decision date is tonight.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think I forwarded to the board in a separate email, just because of the length of the, of these documents, both the annual town meeting warrant in its recommended final form for the board's discussion, consideration, and approval this evening. I also forwarded to you a list of draft motions for those articles. And tonight, we're at the point where the board, from a time perspective, needs to vote to approve the final warrant, so it can be submitted to the town clerk, for the constable to post, and to the finance committee for their final and official recommendations. The only change of note since, I believe since last week, when you saw the warrant, was there was some language changes to Article 11, simply to clarify the language of that article. And I will note that that's the one article, I believe, at this point, that we're not, we don't have a funding source, I think, fully identified for that. And the rest of the articles should be all set. And I think, again, I did forward the motions, so I don't know if the board had any questions on the motions as well, but I believe the warrant is ready for approval and signature, unless the board would like any final changes at this point this evening.
So just from the point of view of the warrant itself, again, this is warrant articles that had been proposed by the articles that had been proposed by the board and/or other boards, such as planning board, community preservation committee, capital planning, uh, planning board itself. Um, and this then sets out the articles that will be, um, subject to conversation and discussion and approval at the town meeting or vote at the town meeting. It's not about whether or not, um, we approved it, we agree with the substance at this point, but I do think we want to be able to go through this and make sure that we believe that it's stating the issue in each case. So just sort of, I would like to go to, to Article 11, because it is the article that is, uh, um, the board is gonna have to make the decision on. At this point, um, the, uh, there's been a, let me see if I can get my Article 11 here. Article 11, let's see. Every time I print things on both sides of the page, I lose it. But it saves paper. So Article 11 is the Lansing-Millis Building Repair Project. Uh, the number that is included in the article was the amount that the permanent building committee identified as, um, necessary to do what they call the, uh, the stables, the full stabilization of the building. Um, and certainly at this point in time, between, uh, the town budget and the, um, the action by the, the CPC, there's no readily available funding for this, other than the possibility of voting to move some dollars from, um, the, a previous article that was unused money for fixing the roof of the old Clyde Brown School. So there is some money that's potentially available from an outstanding warrant article, uh, relating to buildings. Uh, so it's some, it's a little bit a tenuous relationship, but at least it's building oriented. Uh, this board has not taken a position as to whether or not we support that, um, but I want to know, at this stage of the game, is it necessary for purposes of posting the warrant, that we identify this potential article, uh, as something that is possible, could be considered by the town meeting to transfer funds to this, to this project? I'm not sure I'm asking it right, but I mean...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it is not required, um, in order to post the warrant. However, um, I'm, I'm sure the finance committee will be very interested in knowing, um, the recommended funding source when they meet for their recommendations on Wednesday. So, um, I really, I would just say we, we need to provide them some information as to, um, you know, what, what the different options are, or the considerations that the board are, uh, is reviewing at this point. Um, but that is not needed. The actual funding source is not, or the exact amount is not needed for the posting of the warrant.
So the, posting this article, the way it's written, which reflects, in fact, the report from the permanent building committee, states an amount, but does not necessarily follow immediately from that, that the motion will be for anything at all, in other words, a motion to dismiss, or some partial funding from another source. So it's, you know, from my perspective, the board is gonna decide what it's gonna recommend to the finance committee tonight, and then the finance committee will take a look at it and determine whether or not they can support that. Uh, because I know in the motions, the issue is raised in the motions that you provided to us. So let me ask a different question, which is to say, is it our intention to forward to the finance committee the warrant as well as the proposed motions?
Um, I think, I think the finance committee would certainly want to know what the intended, um, funding sources are. Um, so it was, certainly it was my desire to forward to them probably some point tomorrow. Um, the motions is, you know, so far that we understand that they've been approved by the board. If there is, if there is, uh, an article or several articles that, that, that item is still being considered, or has not been finalized as far as a motion or a funding source, I could certainly note that to the finance committee.
Okay, well, um, thank you for that. I mean, I think our board has an obligation. I would highly recommend that the board take its votes on funding sources tonight, which gives the finance committee at least a couple of weeks to think about it, as well as us. I don't, because we're not meeting again until later in August, uh, August, April.
April 26th.
Unless we have some reason for a special meeting. So, uh, I would like us to, um, vote on these, um, certainly the warrant articles, and also I do want to talk about the proposed motion to, that you're, that we're being, that we're gonna consider for Article 11. Um, so having said that, going back to the warrant articles that you have presented to us, um, is there anything in here, other than that, that you called out Article 11, that is different from what we've seen in the, in the past? Are we feeling pretty confident that this warrant is, in fact, the one that, uh, we're willing to, uh, vote on and sign off on and forward to finance committee for its consideration?
Yes, I do. Um, I would just say, as far as the motions, there are only two, I think two items with the motions were really still up in the air, and, and with the, um, uh, I think the, and, and Carol can correct me, but I think the motion for, um, Article 3, we're gonna have to hold on the, on the final language there until, of course, until after the finance committee makes its recommendations. Um, but beyond that, I believe that the only other art, the only other motion, um, that was, had still not been finalized, was for Article 11. And I think it has been discussed at a prior, um, select board meeting, that even though we have the, uh, Articles, um, 30 and 31, uh, the last articles on the warrant, that those would most likely be dismissed, simply for, for maybe no funding available for those.
Well, again, we're gonna, I'm looking to take a vote tonight on the warrant, not whether or not we support any one of them.
Right.
Any one of the, one of the articles, which we will, uh, certainly consider at our next meeting. On the other hand, I think we can certainly acknowledge that stabilization of OPEB, uh, at this point, based upon the budget that's being proposed, there's no funding available for either of those.
Correct.
And, you know, but we will be, the finance committee will be considering the whole package, so that's part of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
I'm concerned about the tally on just Article 1. I come up with a different number. No, I know I don't always add these correctly, but I come up with 45914, unless there's something I'm missing.
Well?
That's your finance committee experience, Peter. Right on it.
Who's doing the, who's doing the math here?
I am.
I'm wondering if my numbers...
Yeah, I think that the, you must have blocked one of them off.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that is 45950.
There should be one more on there for weights and measure for 11377.
Okay, I can add that.
So the total is right, but there's a missing entry.
There's a missing entry.
177...
Well, that's why it's great, it's great to have a lot of people looking at it. Weights and measures, um, what was the amount, Carol?
It's $113.77.
All right. But the total is correct then.
Craig taught me well.
Yes, the total is correct.
Carol, I'm sorry, how much was the total for the weights and measures?
The weights and measures? Yeah, $113.77.
Thank you.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes. Ms. Underhill?
If I may, I have a question on Article 4. Um, are we, the, the second part of this, the professional firefighters, is that something other than what I'm doing with you Mike?
That is the same thing. Um, so, um, obviously, as, as you know, um, it, it, uh, we do not believe that we'll have that completed, um, by the time of town meeting, so we will just set aside those funds, um, since they will be needed in the next fiscal year, even if we don't wrap up negotiations for them until later in the summer or in the fall. Um, we, we will have to set aside some funds for that, so that's what that accomplishes.
So we, no, so if we, in the very likely event that we don't get through that, those negotiations by that, by May 1st, that we'd still want to appropriate the 85,000?
Right, we've done that, we've done that in the past. Um, basically, you need to set aside the, the operating funds to cover those contracts.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that's the question that, we've already settled with SEIU.
Yes, we have. Um, but, uh, I, I think the feeling was we were very close to the end of the cycle, and it would be very difficult to make all those adjustments, um, to everyone's spreadsheets right at the end. So we will, we, we, the funds will be available, and the, the finance offices will, will ultimately be able to put those adjustments, um, you know, towards those budgets, um, you know, after the, after the, you know, on July 1st.
Well, they will be, there's no guarantee that the firefighters will be settled by then.
No, but for the, um, for the SEIU, but for the...
SEIU, we will have a contract in place by then, and we'll have funding available, assuming that this is adopted by town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, other questions from the board members? Anyone?
I have only one request, Mr. Chairman, from that. They take one more, we, although we agree to it tonight, it'd be one final review of every number in there, to make sure we haven't shifted a decimal point or something like that, uh, so we don't end up with a typo that is something we hadn't anticipated, agreed.
So we would ask the administrative office to read through it one more time, count the numbers again, make sure they all add up, and then have it available for the board members to sign it early this week, Tuesday or Wednesday. So I take the motion to approve the warrant, subject to the last minute, double check the numbers.
I move that we approve the warrant for the annual spring town meeting on May 1st, 2021, at 2:00 PM.
Second. It has been moved and seconded for the board to approve the annual town meeting warrant for the town meeting on May 1st, 2021, at 2:00 PM at the Middle Senior High School parking lot. Um, is it the middle school, senior high, or just middle school, high school?
I think it's middle school, high school.
Yeah.
I forget where it's senior. Please, that's ended. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I wish. Uh, I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. If we could take a look at the motions, again, I think the motions, um, are something that we should be forwarding to the finance committee at this time, because it's the second half of the equation here. Um, I'm not sure I understand Article 2. What are we doing here?
Bear with me.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Article 2 is the, the annual transfers that are done at the end of the fiscal year, um, to adjust, um, and balance the budget.
These are inter-fund transfers.
That's correct.
Why are they going to town meeting? Because in the past, the board has been able to approve them.
Well, generally, the board, the board can approve them, but we've also, we've also done transfers at the, um, at the annual town meeting, and then anything that's remaining, um, for the months of May and June, the board makes those transfers.
Okay.
And the board has that, the board has that authority with the, um, in conjunction with the finance committee to make those transfers, but this, this, um, compiles them, all the transfers that we're aware that need to be done are compiled in this one article.
Okay, all right. Uh, just go to, so that's Article 3, or 2. Any questions from the board on that? Article 3, of course, is...
I have a question on that, Mr. Chairman.
Which, Article 3 or Article 2?
Article 2.
Yeah.
Which is, I understand we want to bring it to the attention of the board and so, of the town and so forth, but do we normally have the town vote on it? If the board has the authority to vote, I think it's important that we bring it to the attention of the town, let them review it, but this isn't something I think that the town necessarily has to vote on. I don't want to take things away from the town, that's not my intent, but I just want to make sure we're clear, um, if the authority is there, we ought to be exercising the authority.
Yeah, um, I certainly understand that. Historically, um, usually the town has, when we're aware of the, um, needed transfers earlier in the year, historically, we've had a, a balancing article, that's something that's generally been done every year. Um, and, uh, usually it hasn't, it hasn't been an issue, but, um, certainly we could, we could make those, you know, we could make this something that the board and the finance committee do instead, but, um, generally, historically, this is how the town has done it every spring, and then if there's last, if there's any remaining balancing that needs to be done, the last couple of weeks of June, that's, that's when it's sent out to the select board and the finance committee to do those last, last balancing, but historically, that's, this is how it's been done in the town.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, it's more full disclosure, so, I mean, I...
The disclosure is not the thing to me. It's very important to have the open and disclose, disclose everything. I'm just, want to make sure that we understand that. Let me put it this way, if for some reason it didn't get voted, it would be a very difficult situation for the town, and that's my concern, is, yes, the town ought to be aware of inter-fund transfers, but we ought to be voting them and taking the responsibility in conjunction with working with the finance committee, and I think that's my view on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I just can comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, for, for the finance committee meeting, can I ask the, um, I don't know if you know the report, just provide it to the finance committee about, uh, why the funds are needed in public safety, and usually employee benefits are right spot on, because you can calculate those, so could we have the two reasons why they are, uh, shorthanded? Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I'll just very briefly answer that, um, at least in a broad sense. Um, the public safety, uh, funding that's needed has to do with several, uh, injured firefighters that have been out of duty an extended period of time, and the overtime costs associated with that. Um, and actually, the employee benefits, we, we really don't know year to year how many individuals are gonna be utilizing health insurance, that does change, and there are, and, and there are other factors that go along with that. Um, Carol, I don't know if I've missed anything in regards to either of those you wanted to touch upon.
Um, the biggest thing on the employee benefits is for the retired, uh, employees, they, they have the ability to get their Medicare B paid for by the town, not only for themselves, but their spouse. Um, we've had a big influx of employee, retired employees seeking those benefits, and that's what the driving force on that is.
All right, thanks. So, yeah, that, that's the, that's the very short answer on the reasons for the needed funds in those two categories.
I think that, um, from my point of view, uh, I would like, uh, to follow up on the question then from the finance committee member is, I'd like to know, um, there's a from account, right? Which means we've appropriated money we don't need, or we haven't had to use. What is it?
Right, and I wouldn't say we don't need it.
Yeah, I want to rephrase it, but I mean, I'd like to know the source as well as the destination. And in the past, when I've served on the board, anytime we're asked to do it... And in the past, when I've served on the board, anytime we're asked to do it at year end, I've always asked for both.
Right. We can provide a list of that later this week. Certainly, as far as the general government, there are a lot of things that have to deal with certain building maintenance and other aspects of really our general budget that we hold those in reserve in case we have problems near the end of the fiscal year. And we have some projects that we wanted to do within the building to do some special repairs. Sometimes those items get deferred because of issues with trying to balance the budget at the end of the year. And but we can provide a breakdown of all those transfers from, for the board.
Okay. I think that would be appropriate for both the board and the finance committee. And is there anything in here that turned out that we didn't have to spend it because either the CARES Act or the federal new law is going to cover for us? Or is that just all simply within the four corners of the municipal budget?
It's mostly within the four corners of the budget. There may be small pieces of it that may have had, that COVID had some small impact on, but not for the majority of it.
All right. Article 3, we don't have a number yet, but we will. Article 4 is, we already talked about the union agreements. Article 5. These are, 5 and 6 will be the numbers related to the...
6 and 7, yeah.
Okay. Article 8. Okay, this is a large consent article, which is personnel plan, border health appointments, revolving funds and CPC funding. Article 10 and 9 and 10 are projects that we already know that the CPC has approved, right?
Yes.
This brings us to Article 11. And what I want to do is just have a conversation about this because I think it's important for the board to take the position and vote on this tonight. Certainly, we are aware of, when we went to the community preservation committee, they had a number of concerns about this issue, were not willing to commit CPC funding. So, the reference to CPC funding is, needs to be deleted. Question for the board is tonight whether or not we would want to recommend to the town that we authorize the transfer of the $48,000 from the Clydesdale Brown Roof Repairs to provide initial funding for the Lansing Millis Memorial Repair Project. Are we better off as a town having some money available since it's already been appropriated and it is, you know, it's a building-related article to do what presumably would be filling the cracks and making sure that animals stay out? Or are we better positioned simply saying there's inadequate, there's no funding available for this? That's really the question the board faces tonight. We do have a recommendation, not a recommendation, but a suggestion from the town administrator and the finance director that there are prior article amounts that are potentially available for this. It's a policy question on the board's part as to whether or not we would recommend allocating this funding to that purpose and then obviously monitor where the money is spent. It's certainly not going to be enough money to do the project that was presented. But the question is whether or not that funding would be advantageous to us to literally, you know, keep the holes from getting any bigger. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Jermaine?
My feeling at this point is this is something the town has to make some decisions on as to whether we want to preserve the building or not. I think the sums are probably insufficient at this stage to do a realistic job of protecting the building for the future. I would love to see it personally. I think it's a beautiful building, but it's going to cost something. And there are a lot of questions from people about, do we want to spend money on this building or should we not spend it? I'm concerned about asking for allocation of funds for minimal repairs that we don't even know at this stage would help to significantly stabilize the building from beyond where it is at this time. I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm also aware that we aren't going to get any funding at this stage from CPC or other sources without further discussion with the community. So, my feeling is, since it's getting to be very difficult to, at this stage, to find any funding that will even begin to meet the $380,000, I think it was, was the cost to do a decent stabilization job, that we take our chances, let the building be for a while. Hopefully, maybe in November, we'll decide with the town how to proceed. Does the town want to keep the building? Does the town not want to keep it? Do they want to sell it? Have they got any other use for it? At this stage, I think it's best not to be allocating a sum specifically to the building when we don't even know whether this sum would be useful.
Okay. Ms. Underhill?
I'm a little more torn on it in that I'm sure that the $48,000 or so could do something, like we said earlier, in terms of keeping out raccoons or other animals and whatnot, maybe some temporary patching. The appeal before, at least in my opinion, was that the work done towards stabilizing the building is also work that would, you know, I don't know, be permanent moving forward, meaning we wouldn't have to redo the work if we were going to make the building into another purpose and do the full project. I guess I could go either way. I mean, I guess my question would be, if we did have this still out here on the warrant, you know, just for the $48,000, and the town chose not to approve it, what happens to that money, the $48,000?
Mr. Gazinski?
So, if you choose not to use the $48,000, it would simply stay where it is? If you transferred it for use for the Lansing Millis Memorial Building and you didn't use it, it would simply stay there until the town decided to move it again or make some other use of those funds?
Okay. So, yeah, I don't know. I'm kind of torn. I guess I could see waiting until November and having the town make a, I suppose I'd call it a more solid decision to actually, you know, really invest in it versus holding on to this little bit of money and doing whatever Band-Aids and patches we could. I mean, I'm not a building expert, so I'm not sure if it would really have any value, as Pete said.
From my perspective, I guess what I would think is that having some funding available subject to utilization and direction from the permanent building committee is a little bit of an insurance policy here, that we're able to do something. Maybe not very much. And I'm not saying that we have to spend $48,000, but at this point in time, without something, we have no money available for anything that might occur to that building between now and November at the earliest. I also think that it's possible that we, from my point of view, you take the position that says, okay, the town is willing to commit something to this. Now, it's not, it's the town's money. I mean, I'm not suggesting that it's free money. But I think that we're, it's more prudent at this point to identify this funding source, move it to an account which could be utilized for, I'll call it temporary repairs or whatever for this building, and then continue to work on whether or not a full proposal can be presented. Now, again, it's up to the review of the finance committee and the town meeting as to whether or not they agree with that. In a way, if you don't put anything on, then it's clear what's going to happen. I mean, the alternative here is the board would approve a recommendation to dismiss Article 11. That's the choice.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Sorry. Go ahead, Pete.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, a question I would ask then is, if, number one, if we don't move the, ask to move the funds to this building, where would the funds go ultimately? Back to the community? Or do they have some other project that they could be used on? That's my first question.
Mr. Gazinski?
Yes. These funds could go to any, the town meeting could use these for any little purpose. Generally, historically, what's done with these excess funds is they're used for another future capital project or towards another capital project. So, that's generally what's done with them. But they would sit in that article until town meeting took a vote to reappropriate those funds, to transfer those funds to some other purpose.
I hate to ask it this way, but could the funds be used, for example, to help with the acoustics at the pickleball color course? I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm just saying, could they be used for something like that?
Yes, they could. Okay.
Then I'm coming back again to, I would like to personally see the building restored, but I don't see anything right now that tells me $48,000, $49,000, whatever you want to call it, is going to make a major difference in the stability of the building between now and November or through the next winter, which is more than likely. And so, that's where I got the problem is putting money into something that I just don't see a community is going to say, yes, we really think we want to save this building, much as I might like it.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
So, I appreciate what Pete's saying, and I was kind of thinking a little bit differently in that, so if the $40,000, $49,000 can be used for anything, oh, that's not going to come out right. Let me back up. So, I liked what Chairman McCaffrey had to say about buy-in. So, if this was something, if we did propose to use this money and have town meeting vote to transfer it, that would indicate that there is some buy-in to the project that would obviously then have to be pitched more later because this wouldn't really do much except hopefully keep it from deteriorating further than what we want to deal with. I mean, if we don't use this money, and it could be used for something like pickleball soundproofing or whatnot, we can't use it for that right now, right? So, I mean, that would be something that would have to happen in November or another time. So, it's not like we can apply that money to another purpose right now because we don't have something like that on the warrant. Is that correct?
Correct. You do not currently have anything on the warrant that would pay for something like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Karen.
Just a side note here. I will note that the fire alarm, which is a human safety issue, was pushed off until November, which is something that desperately needs to happen here at this town building. I will also say that our stairs out front are falling apart. If you come up the stairs, you can see the concrete falling off. There's a lot of building repair that needs to be done here as well. Just something else to think about, you know? I would love to see this building repaired as well and be able to use it. It's definitely a difficult decision, but I know there's a lot of places we could use the money, that's for sure.
There's no surprise on that.
No.
So, the question, any other comments?
How much is the fire suppression thing is like 60-something thousand, right?
I believe it's 63,000.
Yes. But then, the decision at the end of the day is if we decide not to go forward this, that leaves the money available for other projects, most likely then for the fall town meeting. And the point is well taken that there's a lot of uses for this money.
Mr. Chair, if I might make a suggestion for the future? I'd just like to remind the board that CPC funds were used to renovate Veterans Memorial Building. And perhaps Mr. Karen could put something together to ask the CPC to fix the historical stairs that are falling apart? And maybe it could be a, you know, 50-50 split or 60% from CPC and throw in a few bucks from the town. But it might be something that, and I'm on the CPC, but not a voting member, but I'd be willing to help Karen in this endeavor if the board sees fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I'll ask the board if we want to take the position that we're going to make this recommendation now or take the position that there really is no funding available and support a motion to dismiss the article at the spring town meeting. So, that's an either or. So, I mean, I guess I'll make the motion that we recommend to the town that we transfer the money, $48,000, from the Clydesdale Brown to the Lansing Millis Building Project. All right. There's no second for that. So, that will fail. And therefore, I'd ask for a motion to recommend dismissal of Article 11.
Second.
No, I'm not going to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to dismiss Article 11, to recommend dismissal of Article 11.
Second.
So, it's moved and seconded for the board to take the position that we would move for dismissal of Article 11 for lack of funding. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, no. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. So, we can redo this motion. Mr. Gazinski, for purposes of moving forward, indicated the board is not willing at this time to recommend transferring this fund. We didn't talk about the small amount from the signals, but I think the same issue would apply.
I thought they needed the money from the signals, though.
Well, they need, they need most of the funds, not all of it. But, yeah, I think at this point, we would leave the funding in there and that would take this issue up again at the fall town meeting.
I would say to Karen's issue here, I would, the fire alarm is on the capital plan. If we have a capital expenditure we need for fixing stairs and all at the VMB, we should identify that and notify the capital planning committee that should go on the list of things to be done. Because they're not interested in where the funding comes from. They just want to identify the projects.
I will do that. I just noticed that as of late, as we've gotten into spring here, past the salt being on the stairs, that they are deteriorating rapidly, unfortunately.
Well, I think that's certainly the case.
So, I will put that on my radar as well. And I thank Kathy for that recommendation as well.
Okay. Article 12, anything you want to talk about in the motion there?
No, Mr. Chairman. Pretty straightforward. That was always planned to be for free cash for that item.
Article 13, which is the assessment article?
That's the same, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to add.
The recertification. These are really sort of core government functions that we've got to do.
Yes.
15 is the capital planning article?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. These are the items that have been reviewed by the capital committee and ranked. and ranked, however, you'll see that we do have some must funds that have been identified for funding, and that the, the first three items fall into that category. The last three have to do with, oh, the la, the next two have to do with PFAS and funding from the Water Enterprise Fund to address costs associated with those items. Just as an aside, DPW Director and I work with Kleinfelder, and that earmark has been submitted to the Congressman's Office, so we're, we need to get back on that. So, I want to thank the DPW Director and Kleinfelder for all their work, putting that information together. Hopefully, we'll, we'll have some benefit from that, time will tell, but I'm hopeful. The last item is the Water Enterprise Fund, Water Systems Response Plan for thirty thousand, so, so that's funding from free cash and funding from the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund.
But the Water Systems Response item is also a required item, right? I mean, it's-
It is, that is a required item, yes.
And the other two are the PFAS, very beginning of the PFAS.
Which we really don't, yeah, which we really have to move forward on.
Yeah. Okay. Article sixteen is tree trimming.
Yes, so that's a raise and appropriate.
Right, and then Article seventeen, this number keeps changing.
It's a combination of, well, it was originally just a fifty thousand in raise and appropriate, but we've now added forty-five thousand in free cash, that's the remainder of the free cash, in an attempt to get the road maintenance and repair item as high as possible.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I was just wondering, the funds that you pointed out, where you, we were going to potentially use in Article 11, could any of that be applied to roads?
Yes, that could be technically applied to roads, if that was the priority of the board, we could certainly look at doing that.
I'm just thinking it's another, essentially, another fifty thousand dollars, so suddenly we could have close to a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, or more, which at least gets us a little closer to having a more realistic amount going into roads beyond Chapter ninety funds. I realize it's a little less than half of what we might like, but it's better than nothing.
It's also one-time money.
I, I'm looking at anything right at this stage, I'm just suggesting if I'm not-
Well, I mean, I understand your suggestion, and the question at this point in time, since we're now at decision time, is it something you want to recommend the board consider? Because now we're going to decide tonight whether we're going to ask for the additional funding based upon the transfer from the article, which, you know, is certainly legitimate. I mean, it's a well, it's a point well taken, we just have to decide whether we want to do it or not.
Well, you know, other than my suggestion, I'll ask what the opinions of the others are on the board.
Well, I'm willing to consider it, I think that it is certainly a need in the town, and if we decide we want to use this one-time money and make the recommendation now, I think that we need to explain to folks that this is not a sustainable amount, that we're still way off, but at least, if your point is, it is a, it is a step.
I think we need to begin a dialogue with the town, so they under, so everyone understands, if we are serious about fixing our roads, we can't continue in this piecemeal fashion. We need three hundred, four hundred thousand a year to go into the roads, and that doesn't come out of the clouds from nowhere. So, if people are serious about they want to get the roads fixed, we need to talk about, have a dialogue that says, okay, here are the options, this is one time we're able to come up with a little bit of money, but it ought to be a trigger to say, if you really want more done, you have to be prepared to commit on all of our parts more to the town.
Okay, Ms. Underhill?
I mean, it's not like we have that money planned for anything else, or, I mean, obviously, in November, we can move it somewhere else, but the roads are one of the top complaints from people in town, so even though it's not a recurring amount, throwing more at that, I would gather would be supported by folks and probably go a long way.
I don't like the word throwing it at it, however, or included in appropriation. So, what was the amount?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would recommend, if, if the board would like to do that, to, to limit that transfer just for the forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents. I would agree, and we can certainly add that to the motion, and that'll, that'll elevate that amount for the article by that amount.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Just throwing out there about some future enterprise refunds, perhaps, so just want to put that in the back of your mind, but I know it's already there, Mr. Chair, thank you.
It certainly is.
Yeah, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, thank you.
Any other, any other comments from the board? Does someone want to make a motion in this regard?
Sure, I'll move that we add an additional forty, I got to find it in Article 11, excuse me, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents from Article 11, I guess it was also from Article twenty-six, to Article seventeen, was it? Hang on.
Yes.
Yes, Article seventeen, to increase the road repairs, and I haven't added enough, the ninety-five plus that forty-eight, whatever it is.
Well, the motion is to move, to make a recommendation to move the amount from the two thousand seventeen warrant article, right?
Yes.
Which is Clyde Brown.
Right, yes.
And whatever the number is, the number's here.
Article twenty, I said Article twenty-six, I think.
From two thousand seventeen, yeah. So, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Was moved and seconded for the board to supplement the motion on Article seventeen to add the reference to forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents from Article twenty-six of the annual town meeting, as shown here of June fifth, two thousand seventeen. So, I'll pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey, no. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion's carried, okay. So, we will add the forty-eight to the ninety-five as our recommendation to be made to the town and to the Finance Committee for their consideration. Okay. Article eighteen, that's Computers nineteen, is the Village and Birch Street project that would be from the Stormwater Fund borrowing.
Yes.
Do, do we need to denote the funding source?
It's a borrowing.
Well, this doesn't tell anybody where it's coming from. All right, well, we need to make sure people understand where it's coming, we don't have to have it exactly.
Yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to make sure that's noted in the, in the Finance Committee flyer.
Okay.
That, that's the, that's, that's the source.
Okay, I mean, there's still time to amend motions.
Yes.
No time to amend the warrant.
Correct.
Article twenty is the sixty-one A property, I think we all know what's at stake there, this is just language that is required, right? I mean, this is-
Yes.
Not designed to make it clear, but it's designed to actually do what is required.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, twenty-four, are they all zoning?
Yes, because we're all zoning.
Article twenty-five?
Twenty-five is the general bylaw.
Right, because we're doing this every time anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Right, the town, yeah, the board has done this the past at least five or six years.
Right.
And this would simply not require the ongoing votes of the board every time a project comes up.
Yeah. Okay, Article twenty-six, this is the sale or auction, we'll discuss in executive session the question of price, or price floor, but the article at this point is going to be part of the warrant. Article twenty-seven is the solar panels in the Clyde Brown, right?
That's correct, yeah, the pilot agreement.
And this just authorizes the board to enter into a pilot agreement?
That's correct, that authorize you to negotiate, and if you so choose, approve the pilot agreement with Solect Energy.
Because Solect Energy is going to own the things, right? Even though it's on Town, it's a town building.
That's correct, they're basically, they're basically leasing space on the roof of the Clyde Brown in, in exchange for beneficial electricity rates to, to that building, as well as the town will be receiving tax payments for the, for the personal property.
For the personal property on the building.
Which Solect will still own.
They will own.
Correct.
Okay, yep. Okay, twenty-eight is routine, twenty-nine is unemployment, thirty and thirty-one are the ones we talked about earlier, which are OPEB.
Yes.
Talk about another hidden problem, it's not as clear as the road problem, but it's just as expensive. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will make all those changes to the motions and give those back to the board and to the Finance Committee by tomorrow.
Okay. So, we've already voted to approve it, right? Karen, did we already vote to approve the warrant?
You did, then you just, I just put that you reviewed the article, the motions one by one, and noted your changes.
Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is recommendations from the town administrator on the budget.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's been no changes to my budget recommendations since your meeting last Monday. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the board has, and as I noted, the, the Finance Committee is making their recommendations this Wednesday, so the board does need to make its final decision on the budget recommendations this evening.
Okay, so the item that we talked about earlier with the Council on Aging, the forty-eight thousand, six seventy-two, thirty-eight, that's included in your proposal?
It is included, I did, just did note that the Finance Committee did have some extended discussion on this at their last meeting, and I think that some of the focus of that discussion was, well, one, it was located in both places, so I would recommend to the board, as you discussed this evening, to probably take that request off the HCA listing.
Yes.
And then it's really just a matter of the board to determine whether you not, whether or not you want to support, you know, well, first of all, support the item, and then if so, if you'd like to support it for a full year, or perhaps start it later in the year, when the building's more likely to be open, I, I understand the Council on Aging, the Director discussed earlier this evening, that it, that the position will require some training, so it's really up to the board to determine if, how you'd like to proceed with that particular request above, for above-level service funding.
Right. So, at this point, I think, question is, in terms of budget requests, we already have forty-eight, six seventy-two, is there any interest on the board's part to moderate that by changing the start date? There is, in the memo, we see that the, if the item was to go into effect on October one rather than July one, the funding would be reduced, the funding request would be reduced to thirty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Town Administrator says he thinks it's a reasonable compromise, that's his point of view. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jermaine?
Yeah, I sat in on the Finance Committee meeting the other night, as you know, and I don't think it's an unreasonable request, which is partly why I was asking the questions of the Director of the Council on Aging, Hattie, earlier. I realize that things have been put off a bit, on the other hand, we did increase her hours and so on to cover for the time, and I'm just thinking that if it's unlikely to be open much before that time, I think that she can cover as she has been, and then we bring on the new person, and she can go through the training and get the support that she needs. It's, I'm torn, because I want to ensure that the seniors begin to get the coverage they need, and they deserve. And so, the problem I'm having with that is if, in fact, we begin to open up in the August timeframe, which is entirely possible, then we don't have necessarily the amount of coverage that she would like, and I'm wondering if we're being penny-wise and pound foolish by worrying about eight or ten thousand dollars, and I don't have a good answer to that one. So, that's part of why I'm torn on this.
Well, no questions are answered easily, that's for sure, but at this point, the question's going to be, what do we want to actually propose to the Finance Committee in terms of our budget recommendation? And it seems to me there is a choice to be made between the two numbers at this point, knowing full well the Finance Committee negotiation discussion between the boards is not unheard of. We, I, I think it's fair to say that the board will work to try to come up with a, a budget agreement with the Finance Committee and the School Committee like we had for the last, you know, twenty-five, thirty years, but that doesn't mean that it's always easy.
I would be more comfortable if Pat, if the Director had given us more substantive arguments, specifics for what she was going to do during this period. I'm just uncomfortable, I, I got a general feeling, and I've read the other documents and so on, but the specifics, I can't seem to pin it down in my mind, that's the problem that's bothering me.
Yep. Ms. Underhill?
Well, for that, I see, yeah, I, I do see what you're saying, I was kind of equating it more to, I mean, obviously, it's not comparable to exactly what, you know, duties are, but in the way that we'd be looking to, for instance, increase a department assistant in the executive office, it's going to just shift work down. So, if there's going to be an expansion of hours, which would be an expansion of work, and it can, they have another person to shift that, that work to, it made sense to me that that's what they're requesting without, even though there were no flat-out specifics in terms of, of programming. I mean, if they've been running lean, as it ha, as it sounds like they have been anyway, that maybe that breathing room is just going to let them offer more, more flexibility to do more programming. If we're just talking about taking, you know, a small amount away from it, I don't, I don't know if that, I don't know if that would be helpful.
That's part of the problem I'm torn- That's a part of the problem I'm torn in with, is I didn't get a comfortable feeling from the answers that came out of the Director as to the allocation of the funds. And I, but at the same token, it's in the scheme of the budget, it's a small amount of money. It's just that every little small amount of money begins to add up, and that's what bothers me. You need to have more concrete specifics, and I'm uncomfortable with what I heard, that's all.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
I think the only other thing I'd say is, if we're, if we're thinking of priorities in Town or priorities of the board, right? Over and over, we talk about the senior population, over and over, we talk about the roads. If we're gonna, I kind of feel like we just need to take steps forward on those topics. And we just, we just did in, you know, adding more towards what we would like to allocate towards road repairs, for instance. I'm not saying to irresponsibly just throw money all over the place, but it is, you know, the senior population is a growing population that has been and is underserved. And, you know, while we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars difference, I, I would say that we continue on with the requested amount, personally.
Yeah, my view is that the requested amount is reasonable, that we have heard of the outlines of what would, the intent would be. And the critical missing component here is you can't have programs without the time being open. I would look at it a little differently if what we were told was we'll just open and use the same people, because I think that's inadequate. I agree with my colleague, Ms. Underhill, we did identify this as a priority of the board, just like we do with roads. I would be in favor of requesting the full forty-eight thousand, six, seventy-two. I certainly am in favor of eliminating the request from the Marijuana Fund because these are overlapping, and the nexus between marijuana impact and senior services is not as strong perhaps as, as others. So, I, I'm going to make a motion that the board accept the above-level service request of forty-eight thousand, six, seventy-two, thirty-eight as part of the Town Administrator's budget proposal to be forwarded to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried, thank you. Is there anything else then, Mr. Kozinski, that we need to take a look at? I see that you have revised the exhibit on above-level service budget requests.
Yes, you do have a, an exhibit that specifically denotes the, just the requested above-level service items, which includes those within the operational budget as well as two of the articles on the warrant. So, we've got the IT Administration, which was already approved as a new position at last Fall's Town Meeting. We have the increase in the Veteran Services stipend for the additional services and hours. We've got the increase in the Department Assistant, too, up to thirty-five hours a week for the executive offices. We've got the additional operational hours for the Council on Aging, as the board just discussed. We have the additional heavy equipment operator laborer for the DPW under the General Fund. We have the, and we have the Department Assistant, ten hours a week for the RecreA shipping, again, that's currently funded by the Revolving Fund, but would be, if this was approved, if this is approved, be funded through the General Fund, as requested. And then we have the two articles, the Road Maintenance Supplies for fifty thousand in the General Fund. And again, the other forty-five thousand would be from free cash and the request for Tree Warden for forty thousand dollars for tree removal and trimming for forty thousand from the General Fund.
Because we want to make sure it's clear to the Finance Committee that the recommendation now for the funding for roads includes the additional recommended appropriation from Article, from the two thousand seventeen article. So, maybe verbal.
That's correct.
This is just an attempt to show what's coming out of a General Fund recommendation.
Correct, correct, this just, this just there's a down, the General Fund piece, but yes.
All right, questions from the board? Okay, so this is included in the budget recommendation, and on the Marijuana, we've already, we reached a decision the last time that we would sort of reallocate things a little bit. Is that clear from this exhibit now?
It will be clear from the exhibit, when you, when you received that, I hadn't, I didn't have your approval to remove it, but we will remove it before it's sent over to the Finance Committee.
Okay. And the ones that we have recommended funding would be the library hours, a portion of the school resource officer, the Marijuana stipend for the police summer program, and team program coordinator, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, I think that is the full discussion on our budget recommendations to be forwarded. I'm sure the Finance Committee would have liked them two weeks ago, but at least we're, we would have liked it been done two weeks ago, too, but at least we got them now, so, and it's the twelfth and this time for deliberation and conversation. Okay.
Do you have to make another motion? Sorry, Mr. McCaffrey, do you need to vote to send the budget as discussed or no?
Yeah, why don't we do that, I move that we send the budget recommendation, that we approved the Town Administrator's budget recommendation for fiscal year twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Next item is, Mr. Jermaine, you would ask to talk about the Charter Review?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There had been discussion about Charter Review, and I know that although we had some presentation, there hadn't been a lot of fill-in in terms of what the, what was behind the recommendations. And I was hoping, but I can see with time running tonight pretty tight, to go through and get some idea of what the recommendations were based upon. There is quite a bit of information that was transmitted within the Charter Review Committee on those recommendations. Seeing the hour and where we stand, although I have a lot of notes in front of me, I think we're probably better off at this stage waiting because it's not going to get on the ballot for this time anyway. There is insufficient time to put these recommendations on the ballot, to have the town vote on them and decide how to proceed because we wouldn't have time to even explain it appropriately to the town. So, I'm going to suggest that we defer this discussion to a later date.
Well, I certainly have a problem with that. I mean, I think, from my consideration here is that the recommendations were made, there was a reference to some of the people who were interviewed, but there was no rationale, no answer to the question, why are we doing this? What, what's, what's the benefit, what's the downside? And so, from my perspective, I'm happy to talk about it at another meeting. But to my, to my way of thinking, what we need is to send back to the Charter Review what, what questions we need answered. So, I know that recommendations are there, but the gist of the conversation at the last meeting was, you know, what's the rationale for these recommendations? So.
We need to go on a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to discuss it and put out a list of questions that we'd like to have addressed, that's fine. I see there's a, a member of the audience who would like to speak, Mr. Jermaine?
Chairman McCaffrey, we were prepared to do that when we made a presentation two or three weeks ago, but my understanding was that our Chair had ten minutes to do the presentation, so we chose not to get into any detail. We have a ton of detail to back up our recommendations and a process that we followed. So, if you'd like to put us on your agenda at some point, happy to give you everything you're looking for.
Well, I think that that's perfectly fine, and if it takes a bunch of, an hour or more, we should do it because it's a matter of some significance. My personal view is that I'd like material provided in advance of the meeting, whether it's a written report or a summary or, you know, what it is that the recommendation is. I know what it is, but how is it justified? And I think that's probably the next step. I'd also like to have addressed, you know, the process that you recommend for actually implementing these things because the, you know, the Charter provides for a different process for changing the Select Board than it does for changing the Town Clerk's position. So, I'd like to have that, some conversation on that. So, happy to have another meeting, and I agree with my colleague, Mr. Jermaine, not a good time to do it at ten fifteen. But if there's the time, why don't we do this? We'll set up a time and try to make it clear to the, to you folks what it is, at least I'm looking for. And then we can get together and talk about what the next step would be. But this is clearly a, a, a subject that requires some in-depth dialogue, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is also something that Mr. Jermaine had raised about the Enterprise Fund Committee, the sewer moratorium request?
Yes, as you will see, the committee had a discussion on implementing a moratorium because of the lack of capacity, variety of issues here. And the committee then took a vote, which I abstained, just so we're all clear, because I felt that at that time to participate, I just wasn't prepared to do so with the opportunity to talk and discuss it within the board. But their basic recommendation was to go along with the concept of a moratorium, which they felt would give us some time to put together a plan for the future. I think we understand the basics of the issue. I mean, it's not that there's any hidden agenda in there, we know what the guidelines are, how the properties are evaluated and so forth. From, and I'll be perfectly frank, from my perspective, we're essentially at a moratorium now that's self-imposed because we are at the limits as the Charles River Authority defines them. Whether we are there as a result of actual usage or a combination of those who are granted the rights to hook up, haven't hooked up, and so on, the reality is we're there. So, I look at it as whether you want to call it a self-imposed moratorium or anything else, so be it. I have one concern, and that is that I don't particularly want to tie the, our commission, Commission's hands by having a moratorium in place. I think we need some flexibility, I don't know what's coming down the pike. I certainly have no way of dealing with that at this time. My powers of prognostication are relatively dim at this point. But my inclination is to say, we aren't going forward with anything new at this time because we basically cannot do so. On the other hand, if a number of people were to hook up and therefore change what we have available to us at Charles River, and as more people hook up at Regency and other locations, I suspect our real capacity is going to begin to show that we have, in fact, real capacity remaining, which is what our calculations show at this point. And given that, I wouldn't particularly recommend, and this is my view only, that we have in place a moratorium that precludes us, therefore, from making any further recommendations for development, were they to come to this board. So, much as I understand and in part applaud where the Enterprise Fund Committee was coming from, my basic feeling is that although the moratorium has merit in certain cases, I don't particularly think we want to be tied to a moratorium as the managers of the Commission at this time. But that's my personal view, and I'm trying to explain it from both sides.
Well, I would just like to weigh in on this for a moment. I think that the right approach at this stage for, for the Select Board, since we've been provided with information from the committee, is to invite the committee with a, you know, fair chunk of time for them to discuss with us their recommendation. Again, not for ten minutes, but this could take half an hour, an hour. At the same time, we would be inviting other interested parties, I mean, similar to the pickleball discussion, frankly. But the way I looked at the correspondence from the, the committee was, this is their thinking, and it's time for this board to invite them to come in and present their position and discuss a little bit with us the rationale for their, the recommendation. And knowing full well that if we schedule a time and make sure other interested parties are aware of it, we'd, we'd be in a position to hear from them as well. I, I think that the right approach here is, from my perspective at this stage of the game, is for the board to invite, meeting with the Enterprise Committee to discuss their recommendation, rather than taking an action one way or another, I think that's premature. Ms. Underhill, what is your thoughts on this, what are your thoughts?
Um, I think, I think I like your idea to have them come back and, and talk about this more in depth, that a later date with their recommendations and reasoning. I think what Pete had to say about not doing a moratorium right now makes sense, also considering that we haven't heard from the actual committee or had the dialogue with the committee as the board, so I would agree with you on that.
I also agree.
So, I mean, I, I agree, then, what we will, what we should do is then, again, identify a time and a place over the next, I mean, part of the issue we're facing right now, of course, is getting ready for Town Meeting, but this item, to me, is significant. I know that the committee has done significant thinking, we need to bring them forward to discuss it with us and for this committee, or this, not this committee, the Select Board to deliberate on the recommendation. Yes, Ms. McGinnis?
Thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I'd just like to correct Mr. Jermaine that Regency has the reservations already for three hundred and forty-six, so whatever moratorium is, whatever, like what the economic, what the committee discussed, whatever has been approved by the Board of Selectmen cannot be taken away. And I'd like to ask, Mr. Chair, who else would you invite if you invite the Enterprise Committee to come? And what would the members of the Select Board hope to glean from a meeting with the entire membership that is not already contained in the committee vote that you have read? I, I, this has gone over with a fine-tooth comb by every member, probably for about seven meetings perhaps, and I don't know what more we could explain or what members you would like to invite to a meeting, Mr. Chair, that would add to or distract from what your Advisory Committee has recommended?
Well, I think dialogue is always better than not, it's an important issue. And committee can be, can come, the committee can decide to send just one person, it's just the correspondence. It's just the correspondence with our, the committee that we appointed. They ask them to come and have dialogue with the board about their recommendation, because it's a serious recommendation. And at this point in time, I think the dialogue is important to have.
So I would like to add, Mr. Chair, if there are developers that come before the select board seeking to be able to use the Charles River, as, as a matter of fact, contrary to what Mr. Jermaine said, since you've been known to be at capacity, you have still granted sewer hookups. So I think a moratorium would give the town an opportunity, and I don't want to repeat the wheel here, to do some research and to see what other towns give for those beautiful waivers that boards are allowed to give. I respectfully request that the board reconsider and vote this up or down, and not waste our committee's time anymore to come in as the chair, I'm saying this. I'm disappointed that Mr. Jermaine, and this is why I've always questioned, and I'm not getting all catty or anything now, Mr. Chair, but this is a specific reasons why a lot of people in town don't think that the three members of the board should be on any voting committees, because Pete Jermaine brought up a lot of voting issues tonight. He chose not to bring them up during our numerous meetings, and we could be having another important engineer or something, a research assistant, as a voting member on the Enterprise Committee, that will give input, rather than abstaining and waiting until his meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but this is what a lot of people are thinking, and I guess I'm the, you know, I drew the short straw, and I'm bringing these issues up. But to delay, and delay, and delay a moratorium discussion, you know, shame on you. And I'll end it at that. Shame on this board for not acting.
Okay, okay, okay. We're not getting into name-calling.
And I'm not either, Chairman, okay? I didn't call anybody any names, so don't go too soon with something that I didn't do, all right?
Ms. McGinnis, please.
No, you please. You apologize.
Ms. McGinnis, thank you for your comments. I think that the board has made it clear that we would like to invite the committee, because the committee is going to help advise the board, and we appreciate your input. At this point in time, the board is not going to move forward with a vote on the moratorium.
And my committee did advise you by a vote. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the fee waiver for the Miller School tents.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the, the school has erected two tents outside, outside of the school to assist them in different outside activities. As part of your approval and inspection of tents, they need to be inspected by the, the building department, and the, the building department has done that. There are some standard fees for these permits, and I have had some discussions with the superintendent of schools in regards to this, and they would just like to request that the actual fees are waived, and just any actual costs of the inspection are paid for by the school. So I, I, I've been speaking with Mr. Malaney, I did say I would bring this before the board, and recommend that the board approve this. And I think it's a reasonable request in keeping, in our working, good work, the relationship with school department and their endeavors, and not to charge them the full inspection fee, but just the actual cost.
So again, this is similar to what we've done for other departments? So I'd take a motion that the board approve the waiver request for the tents at the school, the two tents, 30 by 30 and the 40 by 40.
I move that, oh, he moved. Okay, I'll move that we, that, I had the wording, and now I don't. I move that we waive the inspection fees related to the 30 by 30 and 40 by 40 tents at the Middle High School.
I'll second it. What are they used for, just out of curiosity?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Jermaine, or Mr. Chair, or whoever I'm speaking to at this hour. I will tell you that I know that they are being used for places for the kids to eat. Due to COVID, they don't have enough space to space the desks far enough apart, I believe, and so this is additional spacing for classrooms, and especially at lunchtime, as they're bringing all the kids back fully to school May something, first, first week of May, Erin? I believe so, for high school.
No, I.
So anyway, it's, it's due to COVID, and it's just to add extra, extra space, spacing that they need to do.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm tired. Bear with me.
I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Last item on the agenda is the water sewer commitment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just ask that the board approve the water and sewer commitment to the collector for March of 2021, in the amount of $1,195.54.
Take a motion?
I move that we approve the water sewer commitment for March 2021, in the amount of
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the board on the approval of the water sewer commitment. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, at this point, the select board will be considering a move to executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, including discussion of 61A parcel in Villa Street and Acorn Street parcel, and then to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel to fire contracts. Upon completing the executive session, the board will emerge into open session and adjourn the meeting. So I'll poll the board for going into executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you all, and
Love you, everybody.
I'll see my colleagues in the executive room, executive session room. Thank you, good night.
Good night.